All right, so it is 5:01. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Joint Concord and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committees' March 30th meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the region. And after court calls to the Concord Committee, we will do a roll call.
Thank you very much. The Concord School Committee is called to order.
And we are being recorded.
Thank you.
Anderson's present.
Booth's present.
Present.
Miss Datt's present.
Mustafi's present.
Brady here.
Wilson here.
All right, so...
I'll make a motion that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and return to open session at 6:00 P.M.
Booth, aye for both.
About aye for both.
Miss Datt, aye for both.
Aye for region.
Brady, aye for both.
And Wilson for region. See you all.
We will be coming back into public session again for the audience at exactly 6:00 P.M., please.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, we're all back. Welcome back to the March 30th Joint Concord and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committees' meeting. We are back in open session. This meeting is being recorded. We are going to start with our public hearing on school choice that we're going to do... we're going to do the two together.
So I think you just have to state officially that we're opening the public hearing.
Right, so I'll be presiding over this public hearing today on school choice. The purpose of this public hearing is to invite comments from the members of the public regarding school choice, the school choice hearing that's pending before the school committee. The committee will hear comments from persons present who wish to speak for, against, or neither for nor against school choice. And once the public hearing has commenced, there can be no motions or votes until the hearing has officially concluded. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on school choice?
So moved for both committees.
Second for both.
Roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Booth, aye for both.
About aye for both.
Miss Datt, aye for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Randy, aye for both.
Wilson for region. So, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak in favor? If so, please raise your hand using the participants button. There's a little tab there, and there's a little raise hand button. Does anybody would like to speak in favor? And if you're having trouble using it, you can just turn on your video and let yourself be known. Nope? Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak against school choice? Is there anybody who'd like to speak neither for nor against school choice? Okay, I guess, having heard all comments, the public hearing on school choice is now closed, and I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved for both committees.
Second for both.
Roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Aye for both.
Can I interrupt, so sorry, before we do the roll call, just a matter of process. So we opened for public comments. When does the school committee discussion happen? Is it part of the public comments, or is it after, before we vote?
It will be after. We can have our own discussion when there's a motion on the floor after the hearing's closed.
Okay, thank you. So next, I guess, Miss Datt for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Wilson for region.
And Cynthia?
Yeah.
Brady, aye for both, sorry.
Okay, and so now, is there a motion to vote on school choice? And then we will have our discussion.
Okay, so I move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to not participate in school choice for the school year 2021, 2022.
Second for both.
I think I would just add that you'll see in the memo that our primary reason is space as it has been. Secondary is the lack of inadequate transportation system for kids to access. So nothing's changed from our vantage in the last while.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hunter.
All right, so I wanted to share my thoughts on an experience with school choice. I understand that this is about opening our schools to students from other towns. And I understand that historically, we have voted no. We voted not to participate in school choice, and I understand the reasoning, and I respect that history. I wanted to share, you know, I often talk about my life experience and how it informs my choices and my decisions and my thinking. And, you know, that personal experience does include school choice. I have a firsthand experience of school choice and its benefits. So out of principle and out of this experience, because I know how valuable it is for students and families who are not fortunate enough to have a school district in their own town, that is as strong as ours. So I am in favor of school choice, of us participating in school choice for that reason. The argument of transportation and space, so transportation, it is understood for families who participate in school choice and have to go to school in a different town, they understand that transportation is their responsibility. They don't expect the school to provide transportation, so that's understood from the beginning. And also the space, if we commit to participate in school choice, we can only take students if we have the space. So that would not be an issue. If we don't have space, then we cannot take them, although we are participating. So I just wanted to share that and how I feel about school choice and how it fits in my personal experience again and my stand on this. I don't intend to, again, change the tradition of not participating, but for diversity of opinion and for me to share that, I think it was important to comment on that.
Thank you very much. Do we have other comments from the committee, please?
Let's just respond to that. I really value you bringing that up, Fatima, thank you. And I'd like to understand more too, because I know we have, you know, asked questions in the past, Lori, you know, is this a possibility? Because wouldn't it be great if it worked? So can you help us understand? I know in the past, I think because we're a region, especially at the high school, a regional school district, my understanding is that we can't say people wouldn't necessarily expect transportation because there are more restrictions around having to provide transportation. So can you give us a little more insight on the transportation and the space limitations? And what makes things so difficult with those?
Thank you for the question. Again, going back to my personal experience, yes, I lived in a town where the school district was not a good fit for us, so I opted to go to take my children to a different district. And that was a regional district. And yes, again, it was a better fit for us. And it was, again, understood that the transportation was the responsibility of the family and not the school, both the elementary and middle and the regional high school. So it was the same, and it was very clear that the responsibility of driving was on the family. So it was never an issue, knowing that. It's not convenient, obviously, but knowing that, it was not an issue.
Okay, that's good to know. Lori, can you help us understand kind of a little more then behind why we have always said it's just not going to work for us?
Typically, the transportation gets brought up as a factor. Fatima's completely correct. Some districts, and I think this is where our mindset has been, that not all kids have that opportunity for families to drive them, and we're not very easily accessible. I mean, the T comes through, but beyond that, there's not like an infrastructure of public transportation. So that's some of the mindset that's been applied here. The bigger driver for me is the space. We have schools without any open classrooms typically, give or take puberty, where we made a conscious choice to, you know, really enroll seventh and eighth grade together in Sanborn and deal with the fact that there isn't exactly the perfect space to have them both there. And the high school's at its top capacity, that it's been in a long, long time, over 1,300 kids. So we typically districts, and I'm going to speak generally, and then, you know, we can look at the data of ours, once you're to the place where you don't have available classrooms, it typically isn't something you open up. There's unknowns. I've been in a school choice district. We tried to do it in a very thoughtful, slow way. I wouldn't say it panned out the way we had expected. We had some room, but not consistent room. We were trying to get down to the grade level at a time to try to bring kids in, very challenging just to navigate the bureaucracy of the process in terms of how you would enter kids at certain entry points if you're not going to just open it up to all grades, because you do have some options to only do it at certain entry levels. So, you know, the space is the issue. We'd have to, there's always a, and I don't want to talk about money, because Fatima's totally right, this is great for a lot of kids. But, you know, if you bring in enough school choice that you need another teacher, it's rare that the state offers right now $5,000 per child, and we're spending upwards of 20. So there can be implications there, not always. If you need to open another classroom, you know, you have to try to dive into all of these factors. It's, the districts I've seen thrive in school choice really were looking at either enrollment issues or fiscal issues, and they committed to it and made it a really mainstay of the way they were operating. And there were a lot of school choice kids, as one district I know is very successful with it, often a smaller suburban system that sat next to a urban environment, was able to really draw a lot of kids that really successfully thrived out of the urban setting. And that was good for kids, just like Fatima said. I think it's complicated and complex, and there's layers. And unless you've got a space availability that's broader scale than what we would ever be able to look at, I find it more complicated than beneficial, if that is enough. I'm not sure how.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make one additional comment, since we've been talking about diversity. We've looked at school choice for diversity reasons in Carlisle. We looked at that question very closely, and school choice does not offer diversity in a student body the way that you would expect. Social, economic, or even, since you do not have a choice of who you are admitting for those spots, you do not control those spots, then you do not control, you have no say in what kind of students you're admitting, you are not able to admit students that would bring diversity to your student body and would benefit the greater education of all of our students in district. So that was one of the considerations that we looked at. Attending the MASC conference for school committee members, I had an opportunity to meet with many superintendents and school committee members from various districts. And when school choice came up as a conversation piece, there were very, very, there were not that many positives coming from schools that were losing the students, because the money was leaving the district, and there was no opportunity to improve the district that was losing students to the school choice at the district. So it's not necessarily a solution to educational needs of our students, and it does not improve. And again, I was hearing the same thing. It was parents of children that look like us in the district, they're able to find those opportunities for their own students. It's not those diverse students with needs to really go out of district and find placement in school choice that were getting those spots. That's why I will be voting a no.
Dr. Hunter, I certainly heard the conversation, but I want to bring us back to your memo, which I think does state the case accurately, that we do have enrollment limitations and transportation issues that are real. So notwithstanding the ideas that we've been sharing, all of which are genuinely held, I think we've got real impediments that we have to deal with.
Yeah, space is a definite impediment, no question.
Sarah, I think we might be ready for a roll call.
Yes, and I just want to remind people that the vote is to not participate in school choice. And so a vote in the affirmative is to not participate, and a vote in the negative is to participate.
Thank you for clarifying.
Roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Booth, aye for both.
About aye for both.
Miss Datt, no for both.
Mustafi, aye for region, not to participate. Thank you for clarification.
Randy, aye for both.
And Wilson, aye for region. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we can move to public comment. And I do see, I know, I saw Linda here and Amy, okay. And so I think before the public comment, we will have our update from our student representatives, who are always wonderful to hear from, and we value your time and know all of the demands on you. So please let us know what's going on.
Yeah, so we want to kind of talk about something a little more serious this time, because we saw that, you know, you wanted to bring up kind of the schools' response to the recent racism against Asian-Americans, and we kind of wanted to share our thoughts on that too, and kind of what we think the role of the school and the school committee to touch on that. And Linda's Chinese, and I'm half Korean, so this is something that is both, that is important to both of us. And I think that one of the things we were thinking is, in towns like Concord, people often think it's not a local issue or not an issue they have to think about, because they just think like, oh, that doesn't happen here, that's a different area of the country thing, that's not a relevant issue. But I think it's really important to notice that it is an issue here, and that's something that has to be mentioned and has to be talked about, instead of trying to push it off and think it's not really something that happens here. I think it's important for the school and, you know, the administration, the school committee to focus on and try to notice in the community around us.
Yeah, I completely agree. And I actually, prior to this meeting, I wrote down specifically what I wanted to say. I wanted to eloquently get my points across, because I feel that this might be the most important thing I ever say to you all. And I want to start off by saying that Amy and I are very grateful for our position in the school committee, that we get to work with you all and ensure that there's positive changes being made within our school community. And I think whenever a person of color speaks out about any sort of negative experience they've had, be facing racism or discrimination, it's often misinterpreted as people of color pinning white people as some sort of enemy. And that is so false, that is not the intention whatsoever. And by no way are Amy and I trying to blame anyone for possible negative experiences we may have had throughout our time in the Concord Carlisle school system. And it's just important that right now, we have things that we want to share, and we want them to be acknowledged, not just by you all, the school committee, but anyone who wishes to listen. This is recorded, and I do know that some people do watch these recordings afterwards. And like Amy was saying, I think unfortunately, it is common for people to believe that our small community is immune to the racism and hate that we see on the news. And while hate is violence acts hasn't occurred in our community, the microaggressions and the hate that stems in them is exactly what we're seeing on the news. When I was in seventh grade, I can say this from personal experience, I remember in our class, we were listening to Sweet Home Alabama, and I couldn't really hear the radio, and I asked what song was playing, and a classmate of mine said, "Oh, it's Sweet Home Alabama. Any American would know that." Oh, sorry, Linda. And then two kids started joking about how I'm not American because I'm Chinese. Well, despite my eyes being slanted, I did vote in the last election. I was born here in the United States, and I actually filed a tax return the other day. It was not the fun experience, I wished it was, but I did it. And although that can be seen as some naive seventh grader making a comment, the unfortunate part is that there are grown adults in this country who will look at me and look at any other Asian person and say, "They're not American, they're a virus." And someone had that same exact mindset, and now Delaina Ashley Young, Paul Andre Michael, Xiao Jitan, Dao Yongfeng, Julie Park, Sun Cha Kim, Yo Yu, and Park Hyung Jung are all dead. And yes, maybe people haven't died in Concord because of that hate, but it certainly is an issue. And we saw it over the summer when George Floyd's name was all over the news, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and Elijah McClain. All this hate and prejudice that is within everyone, that they choose to just not reflect on, is leading to people's deaths. And it's 2021, and I understand that I myself am super privileged. I have the right to free speech. I have a voice that I can use to speak to you all on, and I, you know, I'm living under a roof, I'm sitting on my bed as I speak to you all, I have the privilege of going to a highly ranked high school, and I'm going to go to a public, I'm sorry, I'm going to go to a private institution following that. And I wouldn't be where I was if it weren't for my Chinese immigrant parents. They came here with just the clothes on their backs, nothing else, and they worked so hard. My mother has two masters, and my dad has a PhD. And I am so beyond grateful for the efforts they put in to get me to this point where I am. And also, I'm thankful for the hard work that I put in. But despite all that, I will always be seen as inferior to my white counterparts. And it just feels like there's nothing I can do about it. And I know that there's probably a lot going on behind the scenes to tackle this issue in our community that I don't really know about, and it must be a very difficult job. But I also know that I'm not the first person to bring up this issue. And I feel as though every single time someone brings it up, we're automatically met with change isn't immediate, positive change will take a long time. But the reality is that racism has been embedded in this country for centuries. It's not just a recent issue. And I do not want to have to wait for my own kids to come home and tell me that they saw on the news that people were still being murdered because of their race in order for there finally to be positive change. And I apologize if I come off as very aggressive, or if what I'm speaking about is controversial. But I am clearly upset, and if anyone does find what I have to say too controversial, or what Amy has said too aggressive, like anything like that, I would just recommend that you reevaluate yourself, because honestly, the bigger issue here is that it's 2021, and racism still exists, and it's still horrible. It's atrocious, and we aren't going to get anywhere until we look within ourselves, rather than just pointing the finger at some other location, whether it be like, oh, Atlanta? Yeah, that's the guy, the shooter, he was messed up. Yeah, no kidding. But when are we going to actually look in the mirror and try to reflect on our own prejudices and our own white privilege, or any other privilege that we have? That's like, this isn't going to change until we do that. And I thank you all for allowing me to speak, and I apologize once again if this came off as aggressive, but everything that happened was very impactful to me and to my whole family. So thank you again.
Linda? No apology required.
None.
You and Amy are invited.
As always, your honesty, your eloquence, and we value you both and everything that you bring to us and continue to bring to us. And thank you, thank you for bringing what you brought today.
I'd like to say, Linda and Amy, that I feel honored that you brought that to us. I think that's, it's a big statement, both on your behalf, that you're willing to bring that to us, and it's a statement of trust that we will take it and not just dismiss it. And we won't, your words were very powerful, you're both so well-spoken, I'm incredibly impressed. And I'm really, I'm impressed and truly honored that you would bring this to us. And you've heard some of what we're doing, and obviously, don't, you know, stay through the whole things when we discuss it in more detail. We really are committed to making change on this front and are trying to support Dr. Hunter the best we can in all of the changes that she's trying to enact. And you keep us inspired to keep on that and to keep moving. And you're right, progress should not take a whole generation. And it is on all of us, everybody, to try to make that progress as fast as we can. So again, just thank you for bringing that to us, and it does inspire us.
I just wanted to add that you girls are very courageous to put yourselves out there so honestly with your own personal experiences. And these are really powerful and important voices, because that experience translates to understanding what you are going through and what the community, Asian community, is going through. So appreciate your voices and coming forward. Thank you.
Linda, I'm not going to be as articulate as you were, but I want to try to say something to you and Amy. You referred to the idea that you might always be considered inferior by virtue of your heritage, your inherent characteristics. And what I want to say is, number one, I want to validate what you said, that that's your truth, and we need to know that. And at the same time, I want to tell you that this school committee categorically rejects the idea that we're going to classify people in that way and dehumanize people or permit it to happen in our schools. You're looking at the embodiment of white privilege when you're looking at me. So there's a lot I don't know about isms and about discrimination from personal experience. The one thing many of us, and I include my school committee colleagues, and certainly the superintendent and her leadership team, one thing we've learned in the last year is that there really is no such thing as not being a racist. We're either anti-racist, or we're perpetuating systemic racism. This is one of our... This is one of our wakeups, I think, that has been very, very useful to us. So you know, before you head on your way to the next place where you're gonna make a big difference, both of you, I hope you know that we, and I think I echo Heather here, we, we have been so, so fortunate to have you in the room with us. And you've got our heartfelt thanks.
Hard to move on after that, but um, but now, now we've moved to, to public comment. And a few reminders um, to, to make, to put yourself in queue for a comment, go to participants button and push the raise hand button or put on your video so we can recognize you. Uh, let us know who you are with your name and address when you begin speaking. And uh, new speakers or returning speakers speaking on a new topic have three minutes to speak. Uh, you'll get a little reminder when it's time to start making your concluding remarks. And then uh, and as a reminder, this isn't a dialogue with the school committee. Uh, it's a chance for you to express your ideas, to talk, to share, to ask questions. But please don't expect immediate answer or response. So with that, do we have any public comments today? Court, I am, oh, Todd Benjamin.
Hello, hi. Uh, my internet connection is bad, so hopefully you can hear me better than, than I can hear you. So this is coming through uh, without interruption. Um, Court, congratulations on your reelection to the school committee. Wanted to say that. Uh, I wanted to also point out that there was no discussion about the school choice public hearing at previous meetings. And I noticed that too about the budget public hearing. And uh, and I think it would be helpful if in the in the meetings before public hearings that uh, it was mentioned, hey, everyone, there's a public hearing coming up. Uh, just seems like a, a, a good thing to do from a transparency perspective. Also, I've noticed in the agenda that there was no update on getting the um, high schoolers back to school. I was kind of surprised at that and was thinking that this should be something that is, is on an, an agenda topic every, every meeting. There's plenty of discussion about the middle school building project, and the middle school won't be built for three years. But uh, really don't see a lot of uh, consistent discussion on getting the kids back to school. Yes, we have had conversations about that in the past, but what, what is the update? Because not everybody's back to school yet. Then also, the, the last thing I, I wanted to raise is, is pertaining to the educational deficit for our kids. Um, it's, there, there's no argument, there's no ambiguity that our kids are having an educational deficit because of the circumstances. So what is being done about this? This is another topic that is not being discussed. And I really don't understand why it's not being discussed. So how are we analyzing and evaluating the magnitude of the educational deficit that our kids are experiencing? Where is that educational deficit? And what actions are being taken now to fix this deficit? And uh, and again, this is something that should be on the agenda for, for every meeting. Uh, and I just don't understand why that's not the case. Because from my understanding, that is the mission. The mission is to educate our kids. But yet these crucial educational topics are not being discussed. So I, I ask and implore you uh, to get these items on the agenda consistently so that we can um, fulfill our obligation to our kids to get them the education they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? I think I don't see any new cameras on and I don't see any hands raised. Okay. Chairs and liaisons reports. Alexa, I think you have a CPAC report.
I'm not muted. I do. Um, so Eva and I met with the CPAC last week on Thursday morning. The, one of their big initiatives right now is that they're doing their teacher appreciation awards. It was actually really nice to see one of the, one of the bigger questions was what happens as a parent when I want to nominate more than one person? So I thought that was a nice sort of encouraging anecdote that came out of that meeting. And then we moved on. We offered um, the CPAC, even though we're having an April 6th hearing on the um, diversity, equity, and inclusion director. We did offer those guys some time to sort of weigh in on their thoughts, which they did. Um, and then um, additionally, there was a robust discussion about um, the middle school building as well as the ed plan, so much so that it couldn't fit in specifically to their agenda. So Lori um, and the head of special education, Ruth Grooby, are um, scheduling a time for a follow-up meeting with those guys. So they have a lot going on and um, and we'll, we'll keep engaging with them moving forward.
That looks like it's gonna happen April 12th. We're just firming it up.
Awesome. Thanks. Eva, anything to add? That was kind of the gist, right? Those are the big topics.
Yeah, that was kind of the gist that um, the, the group was trying to figure out if there is a way to hold those awards in person. It's really, it, it feels like spring. It feels like things are moving in the right direction when we have those conversations uplifting.
Fatima, we're gonna hear a lot from you later with policy. So, so we'll wait on that one. Uh, Court, do you have?
Uh, I can uh, report that uh, we, uh, several of us were at the finance committee meeting last Thursday for Concord. And that'll come up in the Concord uh, part of the, of the meeting later on tonight discussing the middle school. And uh, select board met yesterday. And uh, I believe the Indigenous Peoples' uh, calendar item uh, remained on their consent agenda last night, if I'm correct, and approved it. And I'm seeing some affirmative there. Uh, and then finally, again, this will come up uh, later in the Concord portion. But this is the time for liaison chairs. The design subcommittee of the school building committee had a meeting slated for this morning, uh, but given uh, the fact that we might be reopening some uh, some essentials uh, uh, about the building and what needs its serving, uh, we canceled that meeting. Uh, as, as a lot is in play. That's what I have. Sarah?
Yeah, I couldn't make it in the end to the meeting yesterday, so I don't know for certain that, that the Indigenous Peoples', uh, proclamation, it was on their agenda to, but um, but I, I haven't heard anything definitive from them one way.
And that, and that was in response to the letter that Sarah uh, sent to them on our behalf.
And the work of the middle school students.
Correct. Thank you. Yes.
I'll just, I wasn't gonna do a middle school update since we're talking about it later, but just while there's a more of an audience here, I will mention that our next community forum is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. So that's very important, given the timing. As Court said, some questions are opening up now about um, overall project costs and size of gym and auditorium and everything. And the second really important piece of input collecting is now open, which is a townwide survey. I'm trying to broadcast this everywhere possible. We're going out not just through school channels, obviously, through lots of town-based channels. But um, just another announcement here for anybody who's watching. On the, on the school website, on the building project website, you can find the link to the survey, and we're trying to collect feedback from everyone in Concord if possible.
Thank you. Any other?
One more, just while we have, I think what'll be our biggest audience uh, tonight at this hour. And apropos of Mr. Benjamin's uh, recommendation that we try to give people forenotice uh, as best we can, uh, point well taken. And Dr. Hunter may have more on this, but uh, know a little bit more about uh, the plan for next week. It's already been mentioned at 7 o'clock next Tuesday, April 6th. A community conversation hosted by the school leadership team and the school committee, 7:00 PM. So that it's, uh, we hope, uh, a more accessible hour for more people. And uh, it will be an opportunity for us to hear from the community as to wants, needs, concerns, and questions relative to uh, the intention on the part of the school district to bring in a new leadership structure around diversity, equity, and inclusion. The budget piece of this has been done. The broad uh, conceptual thinking about structure has been done, and we deliberately wanna pause uh, and bring the community in again. Uh, they've been with us throughout, but we wanna bring them in again before the work continues uh, to refine what the leadership structure and objectives will be for next year. I know others have been very involved in this, uh, Dr. Hunter notably. Things you might add, Lori?
No, I think that's well said. The invitation um, and notice to the community will go out either tonight or first thing in the morning so that we are sure to give people time to put it on their calendars. And obviously, we'll record it, so it's available and certainly solicit feedback other ways if people can't make it.
If I may add, um, just an invitation to the community. Obviously, you would agree that we want to have as broad a conversation that we can. Uh, we want to widen the spectrum of, of, of opinions, questions, and concerns. And I would like us to invite the, the members of the community who are not able to attend be with us next Tuesday to send us their questions, send us their um, their concerns, their stories, the stories we've heard from Linda and Amy today. So please, if you are not able to come, let us know what you're thinking about, what you are you would like us to, to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Fatima. Yeah. Okay. Great. Um, minutes from our open session of February 9th and February 23rd. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved for both committees.
Second for both.
Thanks, Darren. Any thanks? Uh, roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
I for both.
Miss Dett, I for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Greenell for both.
And Wilson for region. Thank you. Correspondence in the region. Uh, we had a correspondence about leveled literacy and another about the special education budget, both of which uh, we're in conversations with the administration about. And then one from a student reaching out uh, regarding a scout badge project.
And for Concord, uh, since we last met, we have had a correspondence about uh, the health implications surrounding reopening. And another one about uh, the size of the auditorium at the middle school. Another one about the current budget estimate for the new middle school. Another one about uh, athletics facilities at the new middle school. Then one about uh, ASL, American Sign Language, at uh, services provided by Edco. Then one about the uh, performing arts space at the middle school. Hoping it would be uh, enlarged further. And then today, several in regard to uh, leveled literacy and curriculum. And then finally, uh, one that is a, a second and final appeal from the celebrations committee for the town of Concord, uh, extended to us through Minuteman Media. If this school committee wants to uh, gather on Zoom or uh, physically and distanced, we're invited to create our own little short video that will be broadcast as part of a medley of videos that will take the place of the traditional Patriots' Day parade. Deadline for our five-minute video is Friday. And it would be pretty simple. It would be a greeting to our fellow citizens from the school committee. So if there's a sentiment toward it, um, we could make it very easy, uh, physically distanced or on Zoom and uh, see that this uh, happens absent any conversation that would uh, threaten open meeting law. But simply make it a greeting and keep it simple and get it off to our local cable folks.
I think that it's Friday.
Friday deadline, correct.
I'm gonna guess it's gonna have to be on, it's gonna be a Zoom.
Yeah.
Trying to coordinate all of our schedules in the next couple of days.
I'm happy to participate if someone takes the lead and can actually find a time when we can all do this online together.
All right. So I'll put, I'll put the word out. Uh, I'm allowed to do scheduling talk uh, in keeping with open meeting law.
We can do that by, by email.
See where it goes. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Um, so are we now at Lori? Yes, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, I think you'll find that uh, in weeks that I bring you a report, we tend to incorporate all of the broad and the many items that are in here um, through the report rather than as individual agenda items. So I know, in fact, my report contains some of the questions that have already been posed tonight. So um, and I do organize this, just a reminder to all of you in the public that this is organized in terms of the goals for the year. And that's by design. So it also helps us reflect on where we are in terms of progress towards uh, my, my superintendent goals. There's a lot here, so I'm gonna hit things quickly and let you then ask questions, assuming you've read the report rather than going through every single item that's here. Uh, we are gonna be launching in May a district-wide protocol to capture the really great parts of the pandemic and where we've benefited from innovation and make sure that that's gonna be work that we sustain going forward. So that's a district-wide um, protocol, not a survey. It's gonna be an exercise similar to what we did during the strategic plan. So you'll hear more on that as we get closer. Um, right now, we did survey um, number of stakeholders that have guided the work in returning students to school. And I hit this again a little bit further down. We are um, ready uh, for all the elementary kids to stay all day on beginning Monday. Um, we met earlier today and looked at transportation. We have been able to uh, grant all of the requests for students to um, ride the bus to school. Uh, so we're excited that we were able to work that for parents so that anyone who wanted a bus ride has one. Um, we've been working really hard at schedules and coverage and supervision and all the moving pieces of having kids stay for the full day, um, especially around lunch um, and in outdoor time and how we're gonna structure that as well as the afternoon beyond that, which includes the specialists. And I'm, just wanna remind you that we are proposing uh, remote specialists for the uh, continuation of this school year only. There's a number of factors that lead to that. Uh, top of that list would be we have one music teacher for three schools, um, which has served us well up until now and will continue to serve us well. If it was longer than, you know, a couple of months, we'd be looking to do things differently. And certainly for the fall, we're in the hiring process right now to reinstate those positions. We also just need to be mindful that uh, teachers traveling that much, they're not fully vaccinated yet. So having teachers travel that much does, uh, it does increase the risk of close contacts and more quarantine. So there's a whole other set of reasons if you want more information on that. Um, we are meeting with CPAC, as I mentioned. There's uh, questions and information we wanna share and have a dialogue about programming and um, any other services per se. We did just complete our tiered focus monitoring with the state. They were in to look at special education, ELL, and civil rights. That is um, essentially a document review process. They were on site, but only to take files and go through them personally. Um, the initial feedback meetings that we had with them as they left last week were very positive. Full reports can take as many as 60 days, so we'll be watching for that and keep you posted. Um, it's really interesting, having done these, you know, processes in the past, to have COVID overshadowing the whole piece actually added. COVID overshadowing the whole piece actually added, both a benefit and that we could get feedback from them on how we've managed the COVID aspects of things, but also I think they were giving us a lot of positive feedback on what they already had seen and taken away from what they heard. I did include some data from the fall, and it's really the high-level view of the data. This obviously gets much more granular. We used STAR assessment as both our screener for achievement gaps as we came back from the school closure. It's also our dyslexia screener, so that we identify any kids with particular needs. Just to have you note that the thresholds that are there, we did not use the state or national thresholds that are set with the STAR program. We've actually created our own Concord thresholds. And so any students that were identified not meeting the threshold or in need of intervention are relative to our Concord expectations, not state or national. And when we come back in May, there's a, I think, a scheduled presentation for data overview on the May 11th meeting. That'll be a much more in-depth look at what that data led us to, where we think it's going for the spring, and a real robust conversation on the interventions that we've been offering. Just, it's worth noting that, you know, the change of mode here is altering those a little bit and making, having us reinvent them again. Elementary especially, we had a lot of small group, creative small group work going on even across classrooms because the remote environment allowed us to do that. And now we're gonna have to, now we're figuring that out with six-foot distance and kids in their classrooms. So not that that's a negative, it's just a fact of having to rework that. So a lot more to come there, but I did wanna give you the data overall of where we started in the fall, and, you know, then we'll bring you the intervention plans and how they executed this year. It's worth noting, Aspen's our software monitoring system, our software curriculum maps. A year ago, Kristen Herbert led work with the department chairs and leaders in terms of documenting what had happened last spring and what had not, and that drove our curriculum work for this year. We will do the same exercise at the end of this year. Obviously, the coverage is far more extensive than a year ago, and that will drive us going forward. So we're being really fluid with the curriculum to be sure that priority skills are met and prerequisite skills are ready for kids to go into the following school year. In terms of COVID and the middle and high school pieces, this will loop us into some of those reopening plans at the older grades. We have transportation in the works now with the hope there, too, that we can honor all requests to have students on the bus. Were we looking at dismissal, especially in terms of just the volume and how we're gonna work through that with Concord Police? Lunch by far is the pinch point at both middle and high school. Jared, how many tents have we brought in? K-12? Did we, I think we lost count at this point. Many, many tents onsite at differing degrees at each building, primarily to focus on lunch being outside, but also for classroom and other purposes. Right now, in terms of enrollments of students returning to us, the community has certainly received the plan positively. We're at about 25 kids at each elementary school. Forty about will remain remote at middle school, and the numbers as of this afternoon had about 100 kids remaining remote at the high school. So that'll have us well into the 95% of kids in school during the month of April, which, you know, we're really excited about. Brings a lot of, a lot of planning, for sure, as we look to have safety protocols in place, and a particular effort to be sure that we keep those remote kids included and connected to the school environment and recognizing and naming that that needs to be intentional work on our part, given the numbers and the shift of mode. We are also connecting with the private schools. Our transportation changes affect them, so we've stayed close to them and had conversations with the afternoon runs especially. The principals are taking the lead and sharing the details and logistics. The elementary principals are all sending information out, I believe, tomorrow with a lot of in-depth information for parents as to what's gonna be happening and what the needs are, and, you know, some real basic information as to how next week will look. We have added staff in terms of supervision for lunch and specials at the elementary school, and we are adding desks at middle and high school in order to allow for the desks to go into the classrooms as they normally would. In some cases, in the middle school, we had four-foot tables, which are very hard to do the right amount of distancing with, and we wanna be sure the common spaces are set up for distance, just as they have been. So Jared's team's been working really hard to be cost-effective with desk purchases, and I think, given, given the challenges of it, we feel we're doing it as cost-effectively as possible, knowing it's a need to maintain safety. COVID-wise, we have had 171 cases. We continue to follow our protocols. You know, I will continue to say we expect more quarantines with more kids back, close contacts, especially at middle and high school with less than six feet will, you know, increase the number of kids who will be listed and named as close contacts. The staff continue to receive their vaccines, which reduces the need for them to quarantine, and also will mean all of our teachers are back from remote teaching by the April break, give or take one or two who needed a little more time to get the vaccine scheduled because of the challenges of that process. Pool testing is going very smoothly. We continue to be looking for how to increase participation. I included a lot of detail here in terms of what the numbers have been for student enrollment in the program since we started in February. It is inching up, as you can see, we're at almost 1,400 last week. In great news, the state announced yesterday that they will be paying for the program for the remainder of the school year, so my procrastination strategy somehow worked on that one. So we're glad for that, and now just really trying to help people see the value. We've been really able, we had two positive pools last week, and we knew who the positive individual was within hours because we were able to navigate the testing process. So that, that's, I hope, messages we can keep sharing, that the quarantines don't become extensive unless there's the, unless there's a connection to the positive case and we're, you know, isolating spread. To shift gears then, just to some of the follow-up of the anti-racist and cultural competency work you've already talked on tonight. I had another meeting with the Superintendent's Association Committee on March 16th. There's a lot of really great statewide work going on there, and I guess one comment I have to make that I probably take for granted is the interest and willingness to have these conversations in Concord and Carlisle is not found in every, every community. Some, some districts are having a hard time even having the need for the conversation be valued and push back as to the why and push, you know, some dismissal of the real urgency. And I think to just hear our starting point being so different than that is really gonna matter a great deal, no question. I will be on a panel of some of the people, the colleagues on these committees at the MASs Conference this summer. You mentioned the forum next week. I had, I met with Mr. Nemechi and Mr. Mestrel, and we talked with some, some of the Metco families last week. We've been part of other math leveling conversations at the middle and high school, which it's gonna be important that we communicate that a lot of those kinds of conversations about our structures is really part of that, that work. One of the biggest needs is to be sure that our students of color are not only landing into the low-level courses and can't find ways to, you know, promote and achieve or land where they should to start with. So we're excited by restructuring, and these are really hard changes in some cases, as you know. There's also a recording of a recent discussion. A number of students of color met with the science department at the high school and shared, I think, you know, similar, not as passionate as Linda's and not as painful in terms of how personally she shared tonight, but similar in terms of their experience of feeling connected and, you know, really STEM being, being something they're drawn to. So there's a lot of great conversations going on. I just wanna be sure we share that with you. The hiring is up and running, and we've been quite successful at having candidates of color recruiting. So now the committees are starting to interview, so we will keep you posted on how that all plays out. And I think I'll stay very high level with the middle school project, since we're gonna do that later tonight. I am spending a lot of time on that, as you would expect, and feel, feel that that's been valuable, both in terms of the internal time as we work with the architects and the middle school leadership and, and teachers, but also with the community outreach. I think, I don't have the number right in front of me, Heather probably does, but, you know, it's been over 20 community groups, I think, that we've met with so far, and a really positive flow of information going to them, and they've been really, really positive in sharing that they feel like the process has been inclusive, so. So those are the highlights. I'm happy to take any questions and know that almost, you know, a lot of those topics could be agenda items in and of themselves, and they will be as we put our, put our plans together for the remainder of the year.
Thank you.
Lori, are we about at half the number of testing participants as would be ideal?
So ideal, per the experts, is 75% of the student population. We are not, we're probably about 40% right now. So yeah, you're probably about right.
All right. Thank you. So for those listening in, we hope you'll, you'll echo Lori's message and ours, which is, we'd love to boost those numbers. The state public health dollars are there for us. It's, it's up to us to use them. It's gonna help us.
Yeah. Yeah, last week was a, you know, we don't want positive pools, but I think it demonstrated the, the reason we're doing it was those, those positives were caught and isolated, and, you know, we won't have spread and have any potential, potential ongoing breakouts.
I think too, I mean, I can't speak highly enough about this program. I was, wouldn't say I was reluctant at the beginning, but I was nervous for my kids for so many reasons, and I have little kids still, and I'm not gonna go so far as to say they love it, but I was actually really surprised. I think this is sometimes a barrier to entry for people who aren't doing it yet. The kids swab themselves, it is not, you know, for, I think, the vast majority of kids, that makes it really less traumatic. It's not, it doesn't feel like a medical intervention to them. Anyway, I, that was, I think, in my private discussions with people, I think that had been one barrier to people getting on board with it, and I just wanna make sure that people really understand that it is not, it does not feel like a traumatic sort of medical intervention for any age.
On the webinar I was on yesterday with the state, they really had a whole section on almost the marketing of this, and I heard it differently than I heard it before. So I think we're gonna get a little creative and outside the box here. Not that my serious messages won't keep going out, but to your point, Alexa, maybe a little, little more drawed out, people know what it really looks and feels like, and yeah, I think there's some work we can do there.
Yep. My kids will show you on the video there.
There we go.
I'll cheer them.
Lori, and in the nurse's office, they actually are quite entertaining when they're in there getting tests.
So if we don't have the logistics to take kids through, they're not gonna go on their own, especially at the high school level. There's just no, we, so my district, we take them through on mass breaks. Each class at the elementaries goes through our testing tent. I don't think any amount of marketing you do, especially if it's voluntary, I'll take, you know, I'll go there when I have time. You really have to make it, you know, part of that day. There's no question, it takes away from classroom time, but, you know, it's sort of the trade-off you need to make.
Yeah, you had shared that with me, Cynthia, and I did open those conversations up at the buildings this week about, you know, how do we make it more a mainstay of the day rather than a one-more-thing kind of feel? So you're right.
Well, yeah. But yeah, the people in the high school are, what's the participation of those who are signed up? Are they all going for their tests?
They mostly are now. They weren't initially, but most of them are now. We had started with 1,400 consents at the high school, and you can see it took almost till the first month was over to get all 1,400 to go. So I'm gonna check in this week and see if, if participation and consents still equal each other, if we've got more work to, you know, more room to gain there, just with parents saying yes and kids not coming, so.
I know that on the high school side, that email reminder was very, very helpful because initially kids thought, oh, I did my duty, I'm done, I did my first test, and I'm done. But then, once that reminder kept coming, parents are also reminding kids, go get tested.
Definitely. And I would say at the middle school, the process, again, from a parent's perspective, it seems to be very efficient. They literally do it on the way into school, and so there's almost no way to miss it. It's a, it's a great, easy, obvious process. They catch them on the way in, and then they don't have to think about it all day. So from what I've seen, that seems to be working really well. I was also just gonna say, overall, thank you for all the detail on, and all the work behind it, on how we are getting the kids back in. And I, I wanted to comment, partially in response to Mr. Benjamin's comment, but that I think we, we are seeing a lot of what's going on, and, and maybe it isn't an agenda item, but it's really helpful to hear in your superintendent's report. And to some extent, that's our job, is to hear what you're doing. The logistics of getting kids back to school are certainly not our, our foray. So it's, it's really helpful just to hear that, and I appreciate it, and then I feel like we have a good feel for what you're doing, and then it's all happening. It's great to see you heading back.
Lori, just to get a, maybe in our next meeting, we should have an agenda item on the reopening of particularly the high school, and I know the logistics are at that. And I was just wondering what the future of the tent is, because 14 spaces is 14 spaces.
Yeah. I, I've talked to the town leaders a couple of times. They had put in for a regional possible vaccination. I think they are, they're not the primary site, but they might be the secondary.
They were declined on that, Lori.
Okay. So, so I think we can ask. I don't know where they're at, if they're ready to say it's not gonna happen or, or not. We, we did re, speaking of logistics, the high school seniors, the juniors have been told they're not parking in the lot until after graduation. The seniors are all gonna get assigned a spot if they want one. We're starting over. We're not gonna undo and reconfigure. We're just gonna assign spots to all the seniors for the month of, you know, last week of April and into May. So those are some of the details, but we'll, we'll be happy to share, share more. We needed to get that figured out before we asked about transportation.
Yep.
Those two are connected to each other.
Yep.
So we've, you know, checking, checking off the boxes as we go. We're meeting regularly, you know, surprise, I'm meeting with each level at least once a week, if not twice. Jared's there talking tents and chairs and money and desks, and we're all there. Ruth and Kristen is there as well, so we're really, really, the building, sort of, building leaders are running it, and we're there to support them in what they need.
Lori, can I ask you about the STAR assessment? You mentioned the STAR assessment, and I wonder if you could tell us at a high level that the thresholds are different in comparison to the state. Can you tell us a little bit why they're different and how, what's the, what's the outcome of that difference?
Right. The outcome is that, in general, if we look at national standards or even often the state standards, a vast, huge percentage of our kids meet those standards. So because our expectations are higher here, we raised the threshold, I think, around 20 points. We'll clarify when we come back in May, and look to be sure that we're identifying kids who might have made those other benchmarks but aren't gonna make our local benchmarks, because we all know, if you're, you know, a student in Concord, not able to keep pace with what Concord's doing, that, that's a challenge. So trying to be sure we're identifying those kids who need those interventions. And I'm talking regular ed right now, this isn't special ed. That's a different presentation and conversation. And then, you know, this, this is that first data point to help us identify kids who might need those supports. And then we do follow-up data gathering, and obviously, the interventions are targeted at whatever those needs are. The goal always being, if we can support kids in regular ed and work through those little spots of gap that we close them and we don't have special education needs evolve, but obviously, in some cases, they're the, the first sign of a bigger picture need that needs further investigation. So we'll bring you a lot of detail when we come with the May. Kristen will have all the numbers and the, the data that goes with all of that and the work that's gone on this year. work that's gone on this year. K9 essentially.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared, some old business variance report.
Great. So I can project it or, so when you pack it, you have three items. You have a memo describing the, the region's two variance reports by 1,000, which is the rolled up version, as well as the 100. So what I can do is I can share this screen and sort of just go over, I'll go over the 100, I mean, the 1,000. And if you have any questions, I can pull up the 100. All right. So I need to start by saying, this is a year like no other. We are normally around this time getting ready to start our closeout mode. We are not near that point at this time. We received about nine new grants, most of these being, actually 11 new grants, but most of these being COVID-related grants. And I'd say this has taken up almost half, if not at least a quarter of Ian Rains' time managing all of these. So while our expenditure and our available balance may look high right now, there's going to be a number of what we do every single year. We do reclassifications, we do to our revolving accounts, to our grant accounts. And then as the memo stated, we do have some, some one-time purchases that usually happen in the springtime. So as of the 26th, we had, we had an available balance of $2,391,964. It's important to note that we are in balance. We always keep ourselves in balance. So we, we do have, we do have a positive balance. And I know you guys received this report on Friday and I'm wondering if you had any specific questions on this. So what I wanted to point out and show you, while we're not necessarily in closeout mode yet, we are still thinking about closeout mode. So again, we have an available balance just under 2.4 million. So some of the priorities that we identified, the first being that we'd like to maintain the 5% E and D. To do that, we, we're projecting right now that we need to end the general fund in a surplus of approximately 409,000. The reason for that is in the FY '22 voted budget, you reserve 300,000 for E and D contribution for FY '22. We're estimating about $100,000 in shortfalls in revenue this year, just due to the interest as well as rental income. We did lower our interest in FY '22, but we do need to make up that, that delta for FY '21. In addition, we're, we're anticipating or estimating to need at least another 9,000 in underspent general fund to get to that 4.999%. One of our other priorities would be to maximize the circuit breaker going into next year. So we feel very comfortable saying that we are going to be able to be in surplus. Many of the reasons for that is the CARES Act money, the COVID money did offset, not now, please. The offset money did, sorry, of course I just get interrupted, right? When I'm going. It did. It's okay. So the CARES Act money did, we were able to save some money in the general fund with, with, with the CARES Act money. We did prepay tuitions, if you remember this past, with FY '20 monies. So there's a surplus right now in the tuitions. We did prepay for computers this past, in FY '20. So we are recommending, starting to think about prepaying tuitions for FY '22, as well as prepaying for the computer replacement cycle. Currently Peter Kelly is working on some quotes for that. Some other ideas that we, we threw out there was purchasing an electric bus. We would be eligible at the region right now to get chapter 71 reimbursement on this. So that's, so that's a really good thing. Prepaying OPEB could be an option. You can prepay for next year or put monies towards OPEB if you choose to do so. The snow bus sweep that I brought to you in the capital budget for next year would be something that I'd love to, to purchase if we had available money. That would be split between the region and the, in CPS. Another thing would be to fund the capital stabilization account. Now, the way to do that would be now that E and D is certified at 4.99%. The school committee could move monies from the E and D to the capital stabilization account. You would need to go back to the towns to see if that they, if they wanted to fund this. But because you have the money and you're not increasing your budget, this would not have to go back to town meeting. So if we were to do that, my recommendation would be waiting till the springtime when I'm able to project a surplus. And what you could do is you could move that projected surplus or any amount to the stabilization account. And then that surplus would then offset the loss in E and D to get us to that 4.99% if that's the target. Another thing would be to prepay, prepay ECO. That's a mistake there. Prepay ECO if we know the cost. And lastly would be to reduce assessments in FY '22.
Jared, can you just talk on how that would work? Cause it's, yeah, just talk on the process.
So you are not allowed to end in a surplus. It's, it's, I guess illegal is not the right word, but it's very frowned upon and we would get a management markup in our, in our audit. What you can do is you're, if you are projecting a surplus, you can redo, you can reduce the assessments for the future year. You wouldn't just give the money back at the region. It would be used to offset, offset the assessments. The other thing too, it's, it's important to say, we will not be able to probably come close to getting you a, well, we will not be able to project the, the surplus and probably until June, but we will not end our year until probably August. Recently, at the beginning of this month, DESI extended their end of year audits, which is good news for us because we're trying to get school opened, among other things. But what that is doing is if they do not have the end of year audits in, they're pushing out their revenue estimates. So revenue estimates might not come in until the final ones and for this year and for next year until sometime this summer. Therefore, we won't be able to fully close out because we won't know all of our revenue, especially chapter 71 for the region this summer. Ian, am I missing anything on that that's sort of your warehouse, warehouse when it comes to the audits?
Well, no, I think you got it. But yeah, that delay is going to make it so that way the state can't certify final revenue figures for the regional school districts until probably July or August. So.
So every month, every week I will get closer on projections. We do, we will have a lot of expenses in April and early May, like we do every year. So that available unencumbered balance will certainly go down drastically. But it's only about just under a 7% unencumbered balance right now. So, so we're treading very, very well.
And Jared, what, what are those of the, of that buffet of options? I mean, which ones are time sensitive to, if, if the budget's closing later than, than usual, does the, the reducing the assessments, does that one have to be done before the, the town meetings? Or is there anything that's, that's critical from a time perspective?
No, you can reduce it after the fact. Since town meetings are in June, as long as it's before, I want to say June 30th. I haven't been in that situation before, but, but you know, if, if we do, if we do realize a surplus that was not mentioned before the end of June, that they will offset assessments anyway. It's just a different process than, than us bringing it to you all and letting you know that we will end in a surplus. By law, we, we can have FY '21 expenses spent up until June, July 15th, as long as they are encumbered. So if you encumber, say, you say you want to purchase an electric bus, as long as it's encumbered by July 15th, then we're safe there.
Encumbered by July 15th, not encumbered by June 30th.
Correct. That's correct, right Ian?
For some, for something like that, yes.
But you, I mean, ideally you want to get it encumbered before June 30th, but.
That's what I had understood.
We didn't see this information till right now and I didn't have any time to think about this. I really would like us to move this conversation till next week. I didn't, did we get this memo and?
No, this was done, because it was sort of asked for after the fact. And this is just a very, this is a brain dump for me to get the conversation going.
No, no, I don't even want to spend time in this meeting discussing it because it's not specifically an agenda item. So I'd like to move it to our next meeting because I have questions on the encumbrance, you know, the, the information that we do have.
Sure.
So I don't want to sort of shift away from that and move to this, which is a very important topic.
The only reason I brought it is just because of the unencumbered balance. And that was on that first slide that I wanted to say that we have options. And it sort of relates to the variance report, but I certainly understand that.
And an option is to return the monies to the, to towns or is that not an option?
That, that is an option to return the monies.
By lowering the assessment, let's make sure we're talking the same words. You have to lower the assessment. You can't just give cash back at the region. You lower the assessment for the coming school year.
So it's in essence similar to giving it back, but instead it becomes revenue towards next year's budget.
Right.
CPS, if you end in a surplus, which we're not necessarily projecting right now, but that, since we're just a department of the town, that will just go to the free cash.
No, I understand that. Yeah.
So you definitely can, can help the, help both towns if you choose to offset the assessments with what we have left. Yeah.
I think this is really helpful. I mean, yes, clearly a more detailed discussion would be later, but it's good to know for, I'm glad to see for now that there are options and kind of generally what they are. What is our timing for when we would need to make a decision on these things? I'm assuming it's once you have a better estimate, but.
I would say, you know, by May 1st, I'm going to start having, you know, mid-May. But every week I'll bring ideas to Dr. Hunter and, and, and we can put it on the agenda if need be. But May, I'm going to start feeling much more comfortable than I am right now.
And for example, I would say hardware, 100% go to federal money. Yeah. That's my opinion.
And it doesn't go through an appropriation budget, but it does go through school committee. Jared, a quick question about stabilization, but I concur with Cynthia. We'll want to get into this when we all know more. You refer to a, the stabilization fund. Do we not maintain two at the present time?
Yes. So we have two. We have a, a capital stabilization account that I believe was established in 1991. And, and there's very minimal money in that. And then you have a technology capital stabilization account that I think was established on or around 2016, Ian?
Oh, that one, that one's 2009. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. So if, if we can return back to the, the variance report, maybe I missed it. Tell us a little bit more, not tremendous detail necessarily, about why some significant one-time purchases can't be encumbered, but can be projected.
Sure. So a lot of our, a lot of our budgeted hardware items, we usually spend those, we usually purchase those in the springtime. So we work on quotes. That way, when the items arrive, it's sort of a summer project for them. So that's one. There are certain payroll things that are, you know, substitute costs. For the most part, we do have those encumbered, but there are, right now, we are, as we open school, we are going to be hiring some, what we're calling new nades at the elementary schools. Those are not yet encumbered, but there's available balance that will be, sorry, is things going out of the background here? So other one-time costs, Ian, what am I missing?
That's pretty much, yeah, those are the big ones right now is we have some new hires. And then we still have the unknown of reopening things that are going to come up. So.
And then, you know, miscellaneous supplies and materials. Laurie and I do not like to do large blanket purchase orders. So that's another reason why you may be seeing a larger balance than in years past. One, while we do trust our managers to have control of these blanket purchase orders, it's a false encumbrance. And at the end of the year, many times, if it's not spent, big surpluses come back to the budget. And while that may be a good thing, it's, it's not necessarily, because I'd like to know what is out there, what is blanket. So right now, we don't really have any open encumbrances for more than about $10,000. And that would be for like Home Depot, et cetera. So a lot of our equipment that we are looking to potentially purchase is, is not encumbered.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Let me, let me ask you about one specific item, because I think it'll educate me more generally. We moved money into food, food services at the high school in order to provide for sustenance. When we get into normal operation, does that go back into a fee-based or partial fee-based system?
Yeah. So right now, I just, and I, we, we moved that in recently. We're projecting about a $50,000 loss this year at the food service at the high school, which all, all things being said is, is pretty good. So we did want to just get that in the general fund. We can eventually move that back. But, and we actually do think that now that school's going to be opening up, when we did this projection, especially at the high school, we didn't anticipate that additional potential revenue. But for the most part, our food service is, I would say it is, is completely self, self-funding.
And what we're seeing here in the variance is strictly the appropriation. So some of these monies are going to disappear entirely from this ledger and go to a CARES ledger.
Well, the CARES for the most part is all moved over. Ian does take care of that. But you will, there are things that will be going to the, what we call the 240 special ed grant and vice versa. The, the circuit breaker, revolving account. Those are our two heavies. And then we do have, when we get into the CARES Act, we do have suggestions for that. And I can talk about that.
And they can be replenished by, by CARES offsets, but it's an indirect process, if I'm catching you correctly.
Yes.
Yeah.
I had a question for Jared. Is the, are we, do we have an estimate of the cost for the summer program? Was that accounted for? Because it sounds like from the, our superintendent presentation, we're still waiting for those numbers coming from testing.
We, we do have a budgeted amount and I can let Laurie speak to that, but we do have a budget. but we do have a budgeted amount. And we also, we're certain that there will be some sort of funding for summer school, once the new grant comes out.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So the newest Recovery Act that was passed March 11th, it includes an amount that has to be earmarked by schools for extended day or extended year kind of things to make up for the lost time over the school year. So I think the idea is that it's going to, a certain portion of that money has to go towards, you know, summer school type of stuff.
We actually spoke about it in the morning with the, with both Kristen and Ruth to talk on what they're, you know, getting for needs and planning. Ruth's going to have more kids, you know, to service than other years. We also learned this week that in extraordinary circumstances, we must offer remote summer school, remote extended school year for special education. And we hadn't planned for that yet, so that'll be another moving piece. And then we're very actively, in fact, I saw before we got on here, the elementary and middle are still crunching numbers as to who will be invited and participate in the, any other programming that we offer there. So it's a lot of fluid still because it's early. But we're erring on the side of more service than less. And the good news is with all, with the CARES money coming in, we were, you know, able to say, plan what you need and then bring us the number. We're not going to give you, you know, you know what the budget is, factor it in, but plan what you need, and then we'll work through the money part.
So what is our plan at the region?
So we're still talking. Right now, we're essentially focused on extended school year. We haven't talked on any regular ed component of regional services. We're focused on the special education. So we'll bring that to you as we make our way through it.
But we don't usually have a summer school at the region, right?
No, we don't usually. They might have credit recovery that comes through often. Some, ironically, we thought it was, you know, creative at the time, more remote environment, you know, some of the VHS options, things like that. We always have some credit recovery opportunities for kids who need them, but on a much smaller scale.
So are you thinking...
We'll do all that work.
How you might staff such a program?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We have to identify the needs, and then we'll figure the staffing.
Because I think it's something like 20% for summer school or some number like that. So it's a pretty wide...
It was healthy enough, based on what Ian had sort of alluded to, that I literally said, bring us what you need for kids, anyone who needs service, because we know there's money coming, so.
And that would be the rising ninth graders, just so, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know it's a lot, so if there's ways we can, you know, we've got all these moving pieces with the typical complexities now with all the additional. We want to be sure we're getting it to you in the most comprehensible way possible. So, and I expect we need to come back to it. It's not a one-night discussion.
No, because we really need to get that federal money number.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that's in the next couple of weeks, since the town got their number. Because I think a lot of the, it's, you know, we're going to try to add a, and I think the the date that needs to be expanded is September 1st, 2023, or something like that.
I heard last 2024, Jared.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
2024.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to spread it out.
Yes, that would be the takeaway there.
My recommendation. So the December money that was talked about, we just learned of that earlier this month. So that will be on in the next conversation when I talk about the CARES Act. That was the DESI Emergency Relief 2 that came out in December, but they just verified that, they just verified that amount.
I think this next, the most recent one will move much quicker. On my call with the commissioner last week, they had, you know, big picture numbers from the federal government, but they hadn't actually gotten the allocation in the process yet to achieve it, so. But they were sounding like they thought it would move fairly quickly.
Any other questions on variance? No? Can we go to, now back to the, anything else on the, you have a full-up...
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I show this, you know, just go over it really quickly? So this is a memo that we put together. As of March 26th, all of our CARES Act and emergency relief money. And I just want to start off by saying that, you know, we have pages above, pages of backup of all of this. We will be audited on it. And like I said, it is a part-time job for Ian right now. So as of March 26th, we had about 1.3 million between both districts eligible costs. Of these, about 268 were one-time costs. So here are the, here are the cost categories that are basically supplied to us by DESI on how they want to see these numbers projected and explained. So at the region, about 322,321, and at CPS, just over a million. Here is what is in the examples of what is in each cost category. And then a nice little pie chart here. So this has been updated. So the CARES Act, the CARES Act is, that does have to be expended by June 30th. That will be expended. The 297 at the region and the 467 at CPS. Right now, the two emergency relief amounts at both the region and at CPS, right now, we're hoping that we can bring that into FY22 and beyond. We know we will need it for next year. I know there is other monies coming, but we don't know what that is yet. We don't know how stringent it's going to be. These emergency relief monies are there for emergencies. I feel that anything that, any expenses to get us through June 30th can either be used by CARES Act or potentially general fund offsets. All of the tents, pretty much all of the PPE, that is all here in the encumbered or expended portion of the CARES Act money. So that is right now our, my recommendation to try not to dip into those relief monies until we need them.
Jared, can I just ask, the next time we see this updated, can you also put a time reference to each of the...
Sure, I had that before, yeah.
Just to, because now it's getting to be a lot of them, so.
Right, and I think I did do that before, but absolutely. And I have something up here that I can even show you. Oh, I don't, but yes, I can. You know what, I'm going to quickly show this. So something like this, this is what we did in the past. So this is from this October. But this CARES Act money, they did change this to 630. And then here are the emergency relief for 930, 2022. And I think the latest one, the latest one might go into '24, but I got to double-check that. But we'll make sure we have that for you.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
So any questions on that?
Well, I hope that Ian, you will extend our thanks to the people who work with you. We know you're shouldering a lot of this with Jared. Thank you very much.
It's more fun to count money when it's coming in than have to deal with the opposite problem, so I'll take it.
Well, you are, you and Jared are the stewards of the resources that make all of this happen. Thank you.
Can I just say how lucky we are to have people who love this stuff?
I am going to make him blush, but I'm going to say this. He is unbelievable. Without him at this time right now, I don't know where we would be. He handles all of the grants. Basically, all the other revenue other than general fund, and he helps with that immensely. But for him to keep track of all of the grants is, it's a full-time job, and he makes it look easy, so just had to say that.
We love it and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? With that, I think I might propose that we take a five-minute break before getting into policy.
Okay.
Go back at 7:46, 7:47?
Thanks, thanks, Ian.
Abby's going to rejoin on the phone. But she's... I think she's already connected.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay. So I think we are all back. And now, and now we're ready for a policy.
All right.
Good.
So we are bringing you policies that, for first reading, the Policy Subcommittee met on March 25. And so we discussed the policies that we bring you today. JJ, File JJ, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. We have not made any changes. We agreed that to bring it as it is, just for, again, to put a date on it. Same for JJA, student organizations. We agreed that they did not need any change, and they are for you, again, to approve and put a new date on them. Let's see. JJE. Yes, JJE, same as well, is not changing student fundraising activities. And for JJE, student activity accounts, I would like to bring that back for further discussion, if I may, at the next Policy Subcommittee, which is scheduled, I believe, for April 18. And we can go over the changes that we made for JJE.
Sorry, Fatima, didn't you say April 18th?
Yeah, I read it, I was scheduled for, I believe it was April 18th, right? Am I correct? No?
He's talking about the Policy Subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, the Policy Subcommittee.
Isn't April 18th a Sunday?
Okay.
A vacation week?
We're not doing that.
I don't have my phone in front of me, Fatima, but we did have the date.
28th, I think.
28, okay, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
All right, so, yes, JJE. We specified, so for student contests, we did not change the content of the policy. The difference between the current and the proposed is that we're specifying the appropriate administrator, the building administrator. Instead of leaving in, at the end of the paragraph, "Involvement in contest shall be approved by the appropriate administrator", we chose to specify and say instead, "The building principal", that's the only thing, the only wording that's changing for JJE. And for interscholastic athletics, I...
We added cross references. We added cross references to national policies, JTA and JLA.
Yes, everything else was conforming to the MASC policy. Yes, you're right. We just added the the cross references, which is student insurance programs and physical examination of students. That is everything.
Fatima, do you want to take these one at a time and invite questions?
All right, all right. Okay, we can begin with JJ. Any questions or discussion? Co curricular and extracurricular activities. No questions. Okay. What about student organizations again? So it remains unchanged. If we have any questions about student organizations. All right, student fundraising activities. Sorry, was there a question there?
No, I see the ones that are that are the same. You spoke with Dorothy, right? So.
Yes.
And there are no changes coming projected on the horizon for any of these.
So JJE is the one that we're not discussing. And contests for students, like I said, the the change that we made there was just to name.
Sorry. To back to, I would like you to take JJE back and look at it under the umbrella of fundraising and student activity fee. A lot of school committees have statements that they prefer. You know, fundraising occur in a certain way, not in classrooms, you know, those kinds of things. So particularly to the region, I think, or maybe the middle school. But I think that in my opinion is the most fundraising at student fundraising at the high school. But there's some at the middle school, I guess. But if you could maybe take that back and look at them as a pair.
All right. If I may ask, is there any specific changes that you would like to see in in the MASC JJE?
So I could send you some of the other policies I've seen at other districts. But they often sort of either have an umbrella policy or refer to them as a sort of a pair.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I could see how it would relate to JJE because that deals with raising money and managing that money. I can already see the two of them crossing. All right, we will do that. If 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 the rest of the committee disagrees, then that's that's fine.
Cynthia, can you just explain one more time? What like what you are looking for? Just one more time.
Having been intimately involved in this topic at the high school. It can get very complicated, difficult for, especially when parents are assisting students in fundraising projects. You know, sometimes people start, you know, selling tickets and taking the money and going home with it and that kind of thing. So I just think it's good to put some rules and regulations so that the community protects our building heads and our superintendent and even the school committee. So if you look at the master of law, it specifically says school committee is responsible for this. So I just feel like we need to put a little more, just a very open ended, you know, the fundraising topic. And I think it needs to be a little more prescribed. That's my. We can go look at these other policies and at the end of the day, come back and say, you know, this one probably looks fine. But I just like maybe a little closer examination of it.
I would support that and ask that the committee go back to any any issues that we've had over the last decade in this regard, and we have had some. With, I think, some semi independent accounts in the name of the school. None during Dr. Hunter's tenure, Jared's tenure. Nonetheless, we can learn from it in terms of reporting and managing and reporting and accounting. And Cynthia, what I also think I'm hearing you say is let's make sure that these policies tie together.
Right. Yeah, so that's the the history that you mentioned, Court and Cynthia. That's the history that our subcommittee did not have. Taking JJE back and thank you for adding JJE. Yes, they are very closely tied to one another. So if there's no disagreement, yes, we will we will take it. I'm not sure about process. Do we vote on this or do we?
Well, if you don't move, if you don't move them next week. But instead move them only when you have brought any additional findings our way. I think that would fit our protocol.
Okay, so that would be we will bring them back after our April twenty eighth meeting.
Now, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but I will share with you that in terms of, which one, fundraising. The the first line just gives me pause. It's, I don't know how to fix it, however, but the the misimpression here is that in a district like Concord Carlisle, where we go to such great efforts to resource our schools. The implication here is that we have to manage offsets or deficits by supplementing the budget. And I want to make clear that that's not our intent. All all basic needs have been met admirably. And supplement really means go way above and beyond. But I don't know how to word it better, however.
So you would focus more on the fundraising events or means of increasing communication fellowship amongst parents, faculty, students, and presenting a greater understanding of the schools as more of the.
Yeah, the lead that we're supplementing budgets like it's a necessity might convey the wrong meaning. But again, I don't feel strongly enough about it to try to wordsmith it further.
I do share that sentiment. When I read it, that's the first thing that came to mind. And immediately we do have a budget surplus and then we're doing student fundraisers, student subsummers of budgets. So maybe we can say to fund activities that are not typically covered by the budget, not for lack of resources, but for other reasons.
We can wordsmith that in our policy meeting, too.
Yeah, I just wanted to point it out.
I noted it, Court.
A little discomfort, that's all.
I agree.
I just wanted to ask, is there a particular group of parents, I don't know, PTO? Who would we tap for some of that institutional knowledge on how, you know, how to write this policy that would really reflect best practices around fundraising?
Well, I think I'm going to invite Jared and Ian into this conversation. Ian's certainly been a big part of this discussion. I also think we want to clarify differences between PTG revolving accounts and things like that that we might support versus student activities versus because they're not all exactly the same. I don't, I think maybe we should do a better job of explaining and talking this through at the subcommittee and then we can be very versed in it when we bring it back to the full committee, if that makes sense.
I think that makes sense. And you could look at the 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 big knowns like athletic fundraising, PTO operations. And then some of the the more one off ones where a group of students will try to raise money for an independent cause.
Right. Yeah, we'll separate all those out and the nuances that go with each.
And I wonder if we perhaps will be needing also legal counsel to maybe attend the meeting or we could discuss that in between. But that might be another resource, too, in terms of laws and.
Shouldn't that expertise come from Dorothy?
Yeah, but I think between Dorothy and your fiscal experts here in the room, we probably are in good shape.
Yeah, and Lori and Dorothy has legal behind her at MASC if we need it.
Okay.
All right.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Student contests, contests for students. Do you have any questions or discussions?
Well, I do see that one wrapped with others in that it's, sometimes the contest is fundraising. If I'm correct.
It could be. Yes, it could be. Like a poster contest or.
But is that fundraising?
But I, or this may be more in line with things like a league essay contest or something like that. Is that really where this one goes?
That's what we sort of explained in our policy meeting. We did not talk about anything to do with fundraising. This seemed entirely separate to me, but maybe I missed something.
Isn't this akin to the the Spanish or the language contests? Aren't there the contests of this? It's sort of not in the classroom, but.
Yeah, it could. I think when we talk, I think with what Alexa said, we were looking at more the community organization and agencies versus the educator sponsored ones because some of the, some of the ones the educator sponsor come from the national organizations and such like that, where this this read to us, Dorothy included, that it would be more like what you mentioned, Court, the league sponsoring an essay contest, that sort of.
And not the math Olympiad.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Civics B. Okay, yeah.
All right, good. I'm content.
If we don't have any questions on that one. See if we have questions on the interscholastic athletics. Again, that has changed was the added cross references.
The question I have for you, Fatima, is, and I'm embarrassed to say I don't know the answer, second paragraph. Participation subject to school committee approval. As a practical matter, what does that actually mean? I don't know.
And I thought about that as well, and I wondered whether this falls again, just like in other areas, not sports, but if it falls again under an umbrella of approving an activity or approving participation in interscholastics in general, rather than specific competitions.
Does it mean we join MIAA? I don't know what it means.
Yeah, I thought it was more like the spirit of we, the school committee approves the spirit of the idea that we participate as a district in interschool athletics. I didn't think it meant we we like football and baseball and I thought it was just the spirit of it.
That's how I understand it, too. But if you think it needs wordsmithing, we can talk about it as well.
If it's not going to cause any difficulty, I'm going to leave it alone. I'm not trying to make trouble, just trying to understand it, you know. Because approval can sometimes mean something quite explicit and quite formal on our part.
Well, as Dorothy brought up, I don't think it was in relation to this meeting, this policy. But approval also can mean disapproval. It's inherent in.
Sure, yeah. But if it never comes before us in a way that we in fact approve or disprove, why do we have it as a policy?
Right. Yeah, that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a case again of, again, a lot of things, like a lot of questions like that came across. And if that's not how we have been doing things before. And I wonder if we can again start talking about aligning our practice with the policies that we have.
But then to Sarah made a point, I think, about the exchange student policy and, you know, is, could we conjure in our minds a scenario where we would want to not participate in something? And by removing that paragraph, we now have been stripped of that ability. And again, I personally can't think of something scenario where we would say we're not going to have our kids participate in the MIAA, but.
Well, but but there was one in the news just this past week where we might pull pull away from a particular, a particular event.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Lori might even ask the school committee to do, make a move like that. It's conceivable, certainly, given recent news.
I just have a question on the fourth paragraph, the first sentence. I just don't understand what it means. The school committee is aware that teams, team participation in athletic contests by members of the student body requires that away games be scheduled, in quotes. I mean, what does that mean?
I think that, again, is to deal with, I don't know, families of students who did not take that into consideration, the travel, the traveling out of town. But yeah, it doesn't require the quotation marks absolutely. But I think that's what it means is to to make it, to make the expectation clear that this does require travel out of town.
And then perhaps we're responsible from a transportation aspect of.
I I understood that it was that the that the school understands that the students who participate will be off campus, but still under the guardianship of the school.
We're sending our rules with them.
That that's a lot of assumptions, right? I don't know.
Kind of will establish regulations to ensure the safety and well being of students and staff members who participate in these activities.
But Cynthia, to your point, I think there's a more direct way of saying that than the way it's stated. And we can certainly make it more explicit.
Yes, that's the language that's on MASC. It's exactly identical. Yes, there's no reason why we can't, you know, change the wording to make it more specific. Yes. It just seems a little awkward.
I think all of this speaks to how thankful we are. The three of you are working, working so diligently on policy. This, this, what we're going through is unfortunately not a typical, the struggle with policy.
I just wanted, oh, sorry.
No, and as I said last time we talked about policy, all three of us are new to this committee. So we appreciate your patience with us and your guidance.
Well, and I guess, too, how, I know the answer is going to be, we don't need to be. But like, you know, how sort of, you know, sort of, I guess, my assumption going into this was you have an expert in the room, which is your mask representative. And when the policies. You know, like, so I guess what I'm really going at is, I agree, I think some of this, the wording in a lot of these policies is crummy. You know, from like a stylistic standpoint or like, if I were an English major, would I write it this way? Absolutely not. But then, like, I guess to my, like, some of those conversations are awkward. I mean, not that Dorothy wrote these, but you know, when you have your expert in the room to be like, you know, like, I'm coming here from your English teacher perspective, let's wordsmith this. Does it, is that, does that come across as disrespectful, I guess?
I think she's there to offer service. I don't think she would be offended if we, like you said, she didn't write the policies. I don't think that this is something that would offend her for us to want to.
I guess the other problem, too, Fatima, you can sort of, like, it's also challenging to collectively, let alone forget introducing Zoom to the whole thing, like, write together. Like, who writes a book with a bunch of friends? You know, I mean, writing in and of itself is kind of a solo mission. So I think it's been, but I'm glad you keep bringing this stuff up, Cynthia, because I do think that sentence is worth revising. I just think it's hard to do in committee work when we're, you know, when we're all together, like, oh, I like this word. No, I like this word. You know, it gets, it's a strange experience. So maybe moving forward, Eva and Fatima, we can talk more openly about some stuff that sounds kooky and then figure out a process where, I don't know, some, we allocate different ways to take a stab at writing it, not in the committee. But I don't know if that would work. Is that okay process wise?
As long as we're not exchanging information and drafts in between. I think there's no violation of open meeting law. And I wonder how it was done.
You can't have like a Google Doc that everybody collaborates on.
Is that allowed?
It cannot.
Not in between. Oh, okay. I thought you were suggesting it. I was like, okay.
No, no, like Fatima can have a Google Doc that she says, hey, everyone, you can take a look at this and think about it.
Right.
But you can't have other editors.
I don't think JJIV is doing any damage, or if we go ahead and approve it as it is currently written, I think it's perfectly okay. It just was odd, I thought. And now I think we all do know what it means, that, you know, everything's not going to be on campus and we, you know, it's, it could require, you know, a three or four hour round trip, road trip.
So then, but I guess what I'm asking then is, do you think it is worth the effort? If we all understand it, but we all kind of roll our eyes a little bit thinking it could have been written better, is it worth going through the process of rewriting it?
I think it is. I think it is. If it can be better, I think it is worth the effort. That's, that's.
And I, I think from my experience with Dorothy, also, there are some things that are written awkwardly that if you ask her and say, why, like, why this way of putting it? And she may say, look, we had to deal with, these are the three things that we had to get into these sentences. And the least awkward way to do it was to say, pom, pom, pom.
Got it.
Or it may, it may just be, this language has been here since 1975, and it's the language that's been great. And from that, you guys can decide. Do you, do you work on it or, or, you know?
Yeah, I don't have that screen to look at what was the last name of the update for the MASC. I don't want to lose my computer screen here. But they, MASC continuously updates those policies as situations in districts happen where it becomes over, becomes a legal issue. I just wanted to add that having that vague, that a little bit of vagueness is not actually a terrible thing when it says, when a policy says, school committee may approve or the, we think of may approve or disapprove, but it gives, it plans that role of the school committee voice in that particular policy. That's it.
That's a good point.
Well, I would like you to ask Dorothy, at least, what does it mean that participation will be subject to approval by the school committee? I can't answer that question for myself. I don't know. So I'm not eager to tear into this more than we have to. And I know how endless policy work is, and I give you all a lot of credit.
Yep.
But as long as we're, I'm obligated to ask that question.
And thank you for asking. Like I said, that is our charge. It's not extra work. We signed up for this and we appreciate it, your feedback, so.
Understanding policy is part of policy work.
And making sure that it's clear. We will do. So I think we could take everything back and then bring them back after our next meeting instead of parsing them out. I don't know how we feel about that.
There's nothing here that I think is, is pressing to, to update. So I think that's, that's.
Yeah, agreed.
But we, it seems like there was consensus that we could advance JGG. Okay. Should we take a vote?
It's first reading, so we'll do it.
First reading. Oh, yep, sorry.
JGG, no, JGG, they're the contest for students they're going to look at with the ENF.
We just wanted to make sure it was aligned. That's all. That could be just an affirmation by the subcommittee before we vote that there's nothing that interferes with the kind of alignment they'll look for in work with other policies that might intersect with this one. And they probably won't because this looks like it's educational or quasi-educational, not financial.
All right. Thank you. So April 28th is the next.
Erin can confirm.
And now we have our FY21 end of year update.
I think, Jared, unless you have something else, I think you ended up including that in the variance report.
Yeah.
Get it separated, but it made more sense to do it together.
That was the look ahead to encumbrances and options, and we're returning to that anyway. So, yeah, Lori, thank you.
Yeah, I love that.
So then we just have one action item, which is a vote to accept a donation to CCHS for COVID testing.
Yeah, can I just speak to that for a moment? This is a family that had their child tested at the high school and was so grateful for the opportunity that they not only covered the cost of their child's, but donated money for kids who may not have the funds to cover it. And we're just really grateful for the, you know, pay it forward attitude they had about it. It was, it was a good, good moment for us.
That is great. Well, I'll make a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to accept a $600 donation for COVID testing at CCHS with great thanks.
I'll second it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, discussion.
All right, let me just plug in my charger. I want to just understand and clarify how the state funding, now that the state is going to be funding the testing, how is there a conflict there? Do we, do we need it or is it just gonna?
Yeah, the state funding is for the asymptomatic pool testing. This money is for the individual PCR tests that the nurses conducting at the high school. So it's two different testing processes.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a process, if, if somebody needs to have a test, is there, is there a way people know that there is aid available?
Usually that's through the nurses when we need to recommend that, you know, consult with a family and say that. I usually get a call from the nurse saying, there's a need here. Can I send them to the high school?
Okay.
The nurses have been excellent in the buildings that I've been in. Truly excellent. Truly excellent. I would agree.
Well, I would certainly echo the, the thanks, which I think the entire community would, would join in on the kind of expression of support for all our kids as they work their way through this year. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Think we're ready for a roll call?
Yeah.
Oh, Anderson, I for both.
This is a regional vote, and if I'm correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, booth eye.
About eye.
Where is that eye?
Mustafi eye for region.
Randy eye.
Wilson eye. Great, many, many thanks.
And I will make a motion to release two of you and join the regional school committee meeting.
I'll second.
For both.
No, for the region.
Just for the region, not for Concord.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Eye.
Where is that eye?
Mustafi eye.
Randy eye.
Wilson eye.
Thank you.
Good night, girls.
Good night, ladies.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Ava. The Concord School Committee stays in session, and I want to thank everybody for your stamina once again. We're going to turn to you, Mr. Stanton, please.
All right. So variance report, very similar to the high school variance report. We are in balance. We have an unencumbered balance of $2,107,070. I did provide a memo that outlined this report as well as the 100 report. One thing that I did want to bring to your attention is the negative you're seeing in the fixed assets. That's a, it's a false negative right now. We have to, we had to encumber the total amount for our leases. So once we're able to get rid of that encumbrance, that will, that function would then become in good standing.
Is that an encumbrance with appropriation money that will be offset with non-appropriation money? Is that where it goes?
So basically, that encumbrance, once we liquidate it, it's not, so it's not an expenditure. Once we liquidate the encumbrance to the actual amount, then the encumbrance would go down, therefore decreasing the negative balance. So yes, so we budgeted the, the amount for the leases, but they need to see a purchase order for the full amount. It's not expended. And then once, and then we can liquidate the, the larger PO, and that money will go back into the remaining balance. It's just an accounting thing.
So is any of this COVID money that'll be offset? No.
No, it's, Ian, maybe I'm not explaining it well.
Yeah, no, I can, I can put it out because it's, so on the next school committee meeting, there'll be a vote to approve financing for the new bus purchase. And at that point, we'll be able to liquidate the purchase order, and it'll turn into a lease payment instead of being the full purchase price of the bus.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Should have called Anderson in the beginning. Thank you.
It takes two of you to translate for me. Sorry.
So other than that, we, we are balanced or in good standing. Any questions I can answer on this? And again, same as the high school, we will be having expenditures, you know, in April, in May, that will bring this available balance down. And by the beginning of May, I'll be able to start projecting where we're gonna, where we're gonna land, hopefully.
I have one, and it perhaps relates to region as well. There is a, a 100 level here, 1430, a 10 level for legal service for school committee. Is it accurate to say that there is also legal embedded in superintendent and special education? And I'm guessing here. I don't know.
No. So the legal function regardless is one function. So it's, it's one line. What we're doing is we have, so when we report the data, it's the same function. So no, if that's a simple answer to the question.
So it looks, so there are, this is further subdivided in terms of your accounting, in terms of origin of expense.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions, comments?
So maybe in a future meeting, you can perhaps describe to me what district-wide hardware software is. Ministry of Technology, excuse me, my 1450. 1450, sure. I can do it now, or I can do it in another meeting?
I'm going to propose briefly now, and then you're going to probably take us into this in a very thorough way when we devote a good chunk of a meeting to hardware software in, I forget, a month's time or so.
Sure. So let me just call up that expense.
Cynthia, that was 1450?
Yep.
And, you know, you and Ian tell us if you need to come back to us on that.
Yeah.
I need to put you on the spot.
No, I thought I had it, but I do. So, yeah, so what's in the 1450 actually is, there's a number of things. There's the clear, there's the salaries for the district wide.
That's it.
Because Peter and his staff, and then the, the admin assistant. Then we do have some admin software support for about 120,000. That's probably the district-wide databases, et cetera. Then there's some, you know, IT equipment that is, again, district-wide, and then supplies and materials. So basically, it's everything that is spent out of like the, what we call the 100 in the 900 location.
Yep.
And in not in a school.
Okay. So maybe in the future, you could just split out the salaries versus the other stuff in there?
I can do whatever you, what do you, what do you want me to do? Sure, I can do whatever you want, but.
So I was gonna say, so there, now I could see there's a lot of salary embedded there. But, and then if you could just split out the salary versus anything else that's in that, when we talk about technology, not tonight.
Oh, 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 yeah. I thought you meant in the variance reports.
No, 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 no.
And to Cynthia's point, is some of that already broken out in the, in the budget book?
It is, it is. And it will be so in a month, it will be. We go by, we, basically every single location. So for CPS, we break up into four or five different ways.
Yeah.
And we, we show you how much is salaries, how much is, but yes. And if you'd like, if you want to go in the, I would say, the budget book from two years ago, and just take a look at it, and if there's something that, you know, maybe not there that you want to see, because we're starting to create it again right now, we're happy to do that. This budget book is for you all in the public. So we just want to make the numbers as easy to read as possible and looking for any input.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, for me to follow up, yes, separating the salary, I'm interested, I know that things were done differently in the past years, but I'm interested to see the growth of our technology budget, whether it's hardware and software. So separating the salaries from that will, will help me see the, the growth. Yeah.
And that is in the budget book. So we do, we do do comparisons. So we can, I don't like to go back really further than FY19 because I started FY19, and those numbers, you know, I, I can defend. And really, last year's a lot more than my first year. But I can certainly give you, we have 10 years' worth of actuals. But I think the last three years, and we're going to keep getting better. And ClearGov also does, and I can send you all there, ClearGov does a nice job of separating, you know, by, by functions and everything as well. So.
And to Jared's point, if you don't have the login for ClearGov, he'll furnish it for you.
Yeah, let me know.
We, we do make an investment in that, so we're encouraged to use it. Other questions, comments? Hearing none. I want to thank you, Jared. I think we can, no, we can't release you. Sorry.
Well, I don't know if you wanted me to show, maybe this is for another meeting, show what I showed at the high school, just some, some ideas on, on if there, if there happens to be a surplus, or do you want me to wait for another meeting?
No, let's keep it consistent. What you did with the region was give us a, a high level look at potentials and possibilities without solid recommendations yet. Why don't we do the same?
So I do not expect the type of surplus, if any, potentially at CPS at this time. But right now, if we did, one of my main priorities would be to make sure we carry over the full amount in circuit breaker. We did prepay tuitions for FY21, so we should have a surplus, and we will have a surplus in the tuitions.
And just to keep us all informed, the, the maximum is a 100% carryover.
Which is at the, CPS is about 650,000, a little bit more at the high school. And those numbers are going down because we have less kiddos going out. So it's about 650,000, give or take, for CPS.
Thank you.
So the special education tuitions, plus or minus about 250,000. Some ideas would be laptop purchases. I didn't put any amounts there. The, the snow bus sweep for Knox Trail, that would be the CPS portion, and then prepay ECHO if, if the amount is known. So again, very high. So again, very high level and just sort of a brain dump as of right now. And every, every week, every, I'll know more and more about the status of the budget.
So tell us, tell us about either regulation or fiscal prudence in regard to EdCo. What do you need in order to, were you to recommend a payment against that liability? What would you need to enable this school district to do so?
So from my level, I think I wouldn't need school committee necessarily approval because you approve it through the warrant process. If EdCo was to invoice us for a date that is before July first, we could use FY twenty one funds.
And there's been significant conversation among the districts asking EdCo to try to work through at some level of this process because a number of us are hoping there might be some use of this, this year's money towards the closing costs. So we'll know more, but that was a pretty extensive conversation about that request at the last meeting.
And little risk of payment on account exceeding what we're going to ultimately owe.
Right, right. So if you can't get all the way to the number, can you get some part to the number? So at least some of this year's money could be applied, right?
Yeah.
And I think we need to have more thorough conversations with both the Select Board in Concord and the Finance Committee about the situation because I forgot to mention the FinCom, it was announced that our free cash unfortunately dropped below five percent due to a number of circumstances. So, you know, I think we have to be very mindful of a lot that is going on and be sure that everybody knows what's going on. Yeah, because I guess the money coming from the Cambridge Turnpike didn't get into the, into the accounting as soon as it should have, so that's significant shortfall, so.
Is that going to hit fiscal twenty one or not?
It wasn't really clear what the ramifications of this are. I mean, so.
I heard that conversation because we were waiting to present. It sounded like a cash flow piece primarily with its coming, but not for sure when. So it, and it was impacting free cash. So I don't think it's a FY twenty one issue per se, but I don't know that we're fully informed either.
Yeah, it's just that Concord, you know, in very recent history had nine percent and then we've been chipping away at it and now, you know, it's that's not what we wanted.
And two million of that is the stability fund for the middle school. So we would want to name that loud and clear, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
More to come.
Questions, comments, concerns? Jared, thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder, Jared, you probably are going to stay for the middle school project anyway, so there's no sense taking things out of order for the benefit of you and your family. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then we're going to follow our agenda and move on to the middle school building project. Things are moving quickly enough so that we thought it in our best interest to see that we are up to date and that you know what is in flux right now at the project level and what decisions might be forthcoming in the near term. And you heard earlier that the design subcommittee chose not to meet today because it was my opinion that the the discussion about changing what we thought was our design might be taking on sufficient import as to send us back to the drawing boards or at least somewhat back. So not knowing how that was going to come together because it requires some select board input and some school building committee decision making. There was no meeting today. There is a discussion pending on the construction method. That'll be a big decision that is likely to happen at the next meeting. In the interim, the communications subcommittee, which I hope is more than a committee of one, Heather, I hope you've got some help over there. But I know you're doing a considerable amount of the legwork. There is a survey underway and I think we should speak to that next.
Yes, we are a committee of two. Although a lot of what has to be done is just kind of executing. And because we can't get together and do it all live last minute, we're kind of each running with our own pieces of it. The survey is live. I think this is actually a really exciting thing that's going on right now. And as you mentioned, Court, a really important part of this process. We're at a pretty pivotal point in this building project right now. And I would even summarize it as this is a critical, essential question about which, what direction does the community want to see this project go? Does the community want it to be just what's needed for education according to the education plan? Or does the community want it to be more of a community resource? And thereby be willing to support more budget in that? So that's, that's really kind of the big question at a very high level that we're trying to get at in this survey. There are some other questions in it also around priorities and everything. But the survey includes a bunch of the background info on here's, here's what's in the accepted space summary right now. And it, and stating very clearly, it does fulfill the requirements of the ed plan, the education plan. But putting out there that we've heard community feedback that maybe the community wants this to be more of a community resource. And so really trying to tease out what, what do residents want? You know, this isn't necessarily, it's not a decision the seventeen building committee members should make in a vacuum by any means. It's, it's about what the community wants. So that's what we're working on right now. The survey has gone out. It is open until next Monday, Monday, April fifth. And we are doing some really intensive work, hands on, feet on the ground in every direction, trying to get it out to all parts of the town. As we've always talked about before, reaching the school families is the easy part because Lori can send something out directly to all the districts. So we're doing a lot of work on the rest of town. I can go into it more if you want to know, but there are a lot of groups being reached out to directly.
I've seen it in a lot of different places that are outside of school.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. I love it.
Back, by the way.
What's that?
Just my anecdotal feedback, it's come across in a lot of different organizations that are not school related.
Good, I'm glad. We're really trying to get it out there. It has gone, you know, to every Concord Town Committee Chair. And a reminder is going out again soon, we'll do another reminder at the end. It's gone to all kinds of organizations, ones we often work with and then others. And, you know, I mean, I've personally been and asking our building committee members to do the same, sending it to everyone I know who doesn't have kids in the schools in town.
It's well penetrated the business community.
Okay, good. Yeah, it went out to the Concord Business Partnership and Rotary and Chamber of Commerce so that they have access to it too. Given that, you know, of course, the funding for the project is taxpayers. Businesses pay taxes also, so it is both residents and business owners in Concord. And we're trying to reach everybody who has, has an input in it. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, schedule lies, the community forum is tomorrow evening. So that's another really good chance for us to collect feedback and input on this process. There'll be a presentation with an update, of course. And then we'll be, then we'll be listening to questions and comments and feedback there. So in terms of timing, we will collect the feedback tomorrow night. We will have the survey open until Monday, the fifth. And then we will quickly do a lot of crunching of that data in order to have information ready to present at the building committee that Thursday morning, April eighth. And that's where, as Court mentioned, there are some big decisions to be made. And we'll be looking at which direction we head.
Court, does this like put a, I mean, because I watch a lot of your subcommittee meetings, does this put a real damper in your timeline, this sort of last minute? I'll call it last minute, but this, you know.
I'll do my best to speak to that. There's a lot of timelines in play right now.
Yeah.
And one major one that speaks to the critical question of whether we're going to try to build this in eighteen months or two years. Eighteen months would be a rather remarkable feat and I think put us at considerable risk. But before we get to, we've got a long way to go before we get to construction. Heather knows that I'm not sanguine about this survey. And I've communicated that formally to the chairs. I believe that it could, could could lead to some unfortunate outcomes. The survey apparently went out in the building committee's name, but the building committee never voted on it. It apparently went out from the school department through our mailing list, but we didn't decide to do that. It offers, to my reading, the opportunity to spend more than town meeting suggested, sort of a one path, bigger, more expensive. I'm not sure a survey should have provided only that option to weigh in on. So I do have some concerns about it and I hope it doesn't harm the project ultimately. Our charge as a school building committee was to build a school. It was not to build a community school. Now we're deeply into this and it's being redefined as a community school. Now, I love community schools. Anybody who knows me knows that. But we're pretty late in the game for a redefinition. You know, we built a or designed a really spectacular school that meets the needs of the grade six, seven, eight. And it does do that. It's going to be a school without compare. To now just tack on extra, extra real estate to a design, I think is perhaps a, an approach that isn't as careful as it should be when we're going north of a hundred million dollars. When the design subcommittee did its work, Alexa, we were mindful from day one that there were multiple constituencies that we were representing. Whether or not they had communicated extensively with us, written extensively, come to meetings. We knew that first and foremost, we had to support students and teachers. We knew we had to support sustainability. We knew we wanted to build a building that was going to survive fifty years and be a good investment. And we knew that we had a ninety plus million dollar target. Those were known. We knew that we also had a community sports advocate group or many groups. We knew we had arts advocates. And we knew we had fiscal sustainability advocates. So the fact that they have emerged of late and necessitated a new survey might, might suggest to some people that we're doing work now that should have been done before we started. Because in fact, we're asking people to define what they want when we've already designed what we came up with in earlier efforts to survey this community. So I don't know frankly where we stand.
Court, what were the early efforts to survey the community?
Say again?
What were the early efforts to survey the community?
We had a number of forums at the.
I know the forums, but those are like, that's not a great way to like, well, that's a harder way to collect data, right? Because everything is anecdotal and it's a lot of questions and and I did so many of those forums back in two thousand and nineteen. They were more, I mean, the first hour of those were always presentations more than feedback solicitation vehicles. Right? I mean, I mean, I went to like a ton of them.
Yeah, I think that's true.
And now we're collecting feedback with another methodology. We're using a survey instrument and a certain kind of survey methodology this time, correct? And my, my point I'm trying to make is, I don't know, and it'll be a school building committee decision, perhaps with advice from the Select Board, this is a town project, as to whether this obligates a redo. And then there is other factors that are going to come in play. Two two nine, two nine Main Street. A town proposal calls for a field house there. So we may have to ask big questions about whether we have all our ducks in a row and we know what we're doing. But I'll finish by saying this. My ultimate goal is not, is to see that we don't jeopardize the middle school as a middle school. That's my primary goal right now.
I had asked about timelines, so but do you think the timelines will be able to move forward and that this is something that can be?
My opinion is that the gap between the, the town meeting and the election is perhaps too abbreviated and the construction period puts us at considerable risk if we try to pull, pull off a hundred million dollar unusually nice building in eighteen months. I think that puts us at considerable risk. But that's one opinion. My construction experience is limited to about ten years of my career. It's not a big part of my career. So I'm no expert in construction, but I've been there.
So I have a few.
Thanks, Court. Let me, oh, can I just, sorry. Whoops, is it follow, I was going to follow up on Court's comments, but if you have follow up on that, Cynthia, go ahead.
No, I just, I have some questions I've been waiting to ask.
Okay, can I just follow up on what Court was saying just before we switch direction? Just before a new topic quickly? Because I want to agree with something Court said in terms of not wanting to jeopardize this project. I think we are, there is no doubt we are completely on the same page there. And whatever we do in terms of collecting community input and figuring out a direction, it is very clear the priority, no matter what, is fulfilling the educational plan and we want to do nothing that jeopardizes that. So I just want to make that very clear. We're not, this is not a survey to find out whether education is important in this building. That's a given and it's not going to change. That's, that's the priority. I would also like to just comment on the timing question that Alexa was asking because I completely understand what it's Court is saying about it being, you know, it feeling to some extent like, oh, this conversation should have happened earlier. And yet at the same time, when I look back in hindsight, both with the pause that we had to take and also with just the natural process of how things have. I think from a high level, the way I see the process is that the building committee was looking at a target budget of eighty to a hundred million. And so you have a hundred million and you have, you know, it's like puzzle pieces. You have your educational plan to just, to establish what are your priorities? You put in your priority spaces into that box of a hundred million, so to speak, and you figure out what fits. And what fit was, were a gym and auditorium of the size that's in the accepted space summary. And I would, I think the, both the design subcommittee and the design team and leadership did an incredible job of, like Court said, designing an amazing, not even designing a full building, but defining what could go into that hundred million in the best possible way that we could. And so for that hundred million, this is what we can get. And I actually feel like it's natural that at that point, when the community sees, okay, for the target budget that we were talking about, this is what we can get, that people are going to look and say, okay, well, reality check, is that what we want, right? And, and they're coming to us saying, well, if we're going to be spending a hundred million on something, let us have input on what it is, whether it's a hundred million or a little less or a hundred three million or whatever it may be. And so I think it's an, I actually feel like it's a natural point for this discussion when people see this is what you can get for a hundred million. And they're saying, well, wait a second, maybe we want a little more. We don't know for sure if it's going to go in that direction, but that's why we have to ask. So to me, that's why the survey is so critical in order to collect that information. And I, and I know that the timing is frustrating, but I also feel like, like I said, that it's somewhat natural.
Yeah.
And so we're going to do. And so we're going to do our best to, to limit those concerns and risks that Court is talking about because he's right. We don't want to get to a point where we're trying to rush the construction end of things because of all this. So at the end of the day, the goal, the primary goal is protect that education plan. And in doing so, let's look at what the community wants this building to be potentially beyond that or potentially not. So just my thoughts on the, the timing also. Okay, so, and Cynthia, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry, I just wanted to follow up since that was all the same topic.
So um.
Go for it with your questions.
Going to the question of construction method. I know this seems like in the weeds and a wonky decision, but it's actually a huge decision.
Yeah, it's not in the weeds, it's a huge decision.
Don't understand why the building committee hasn't gotten a full presentation on this before they have to make such an important decision. Or did I miss that?
We've had, we've had some information come our way.
I mean, a full presentation about all the implications of such an important decision.
We, we haven't wrestled with it around our table of seventeen members, no. And that's why, that's why we were not prepared to even consider a vote at the last meeting.
Because the, the high school with great success, use construction manager at risk, great success. I can't even tell you how successful that was from every vantage point. From smooth construction to safety. I'm going to focus on safety. You're going to be building a new school next to a running school on a very busy street. The implications of the safety, just that alone of having construction manager at risk is so much safer for the people working in the school, the people driving by the school. It's just huge and I don't know why we would ever put that up against spending a few more dollars upfront to have a safer project. It just, it makes no sense to me whatsoever, that alone.
Well.
So I would say first, that's really important input that we can take back. You know, as we've all said, Court's in my job here is to take the input from the school committee and bring it back to the building committee. We've heard that input from some other people also. And I, I think to your point about presentations, we, we've gotten some information. I think a lot of people individually have been reaching out to the chairs to ask questions, I know I have. And I've heard that feedback also. So again, I'd like to collect, you know, any other thoughts also, but that is certainly feedback that we could bring to the building committee.
Because what will happen at the end of the project, the construction company is done. They leave, then the demo company comes in, nobody oversees that really, except for that person that you put the bid out to.
And can I, you know what, can I just quickly define the two construction strategies for anybody who doesn't know what this is, so I'm going to back up for a second. Really quickly, when you build a building, there are two different ways that you can hire a construction firm to work with you. One is kind of the standard way called design bid build. And it's basically a process where you create your design, you send it out for bids. You pre-qualify those bids, but among the pre-qualified ones, you take the lowest bid. You don't choose, you just automatically take the lowest bid. And so in, in many cases, that's seen as a less expensive way to go because you're definitely taking the lowest bid. Construction manager at risk is a little different as opposed to at the end of design, sending out the bids. You bring on a construction manager earlier in the process. And they are your partner from earlier on, all the way through, as Cynthia says, demolition. Now, there is, there's, there can be a little extra that you pay for that, that partnership of having them on early and of having them take you through it all. At the same time, you, through that process can get a maximum price that you'll never have to go over. So as Cynthia is pointing out, that was what was done at the high school. And in some cases can seem like a, even though it might be slightly higher at first, it can be a less risky option in terms of the upside of where the numbers can go. And like Cynthia says, that construction manager at risk is your partner and is working with you in theory, more hand in hand on safety issues and transfer issues and demolition afterwards and all that kind of stuff. So those are the two different options that we're talking about. I just want to make sure everybody's kind of clear on definitions.
Yeah, quick question. Heather, are you, define the design bid build as standard? In, in comparison to what and what makes it standard in comparison to the other option?
Yes, it's, and I don't want to make the other one sound like an exception. Historically, it was the standard. Then the state, and I'm not sure how many years ago, maybe twenty, for, for a while, was giving incentives to use construction manager at risk, financial incentives. And so a lot more schools moved to that. In fact, when we were building the high school, most school building projects were happening by construction manager at risk. Since then, the state has stopped giving incentives and it has probably evened out again. So some schools have, so the, the trend has gone from almost all construction manager at risk to probably more even, half and half. I'm very rough on this, Jared, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, which I might be. But it's moved, I think he's trying to unmute.
No, you're doing good.
Okay, all right. So it's moved back to kind of even. So when I say standard, it was more historically standard, but right now both are very common.
Thank you. And I, I wonder how also we feel as a community. I think there's a consensus, it's safe to say there's a consensus that we want a good school. We want a beautiful building in the last fifty years. And I wonder how that lowest bid is going to serve that purpose. The lowest bid comes with reduced quality and reduced commitment. So I, I, um, yeah, I don't know if perplexed or puzzled is, is the right word. But it's not something, it's not a concept that we are used to in Concord, the lowest bid. And for me, it means low quality. And I am wondering what's the appeal there for the lowest bidder, for the design bid build?
Well, there's a couple of arguments. One is cost. And if you look over the last year, the, the timing on the recommendations for the design bid build or the hard bid came at the same time that we topped out at a hundred million. So one could ask, is it a cost saver? We can't make the automatic assumption that quality is going to be harmed. But to your point, we, I think the evidence is clear that we increase our risk with a hard bid. I don't think anybody would debate that, but you pay to mitigate risk. Or at least to Heather's point, you pay upfront. And you hope that the insurance policy will ultimately benefit you in the long run. And if not, at least you were protected. To me, this is all about risk, Fatima, it's, it's all about risk. We start with kids safety first and foremost. But there are other risks, the sheer size of it, the, the complexity of the design. This is not a box, this is, this is a lovely building. The risk is in the budget. The budget itself is still uncertain. The cost estimates are uncertain and that's even today. We don't know how volatile the, the construction trades will be two and three years from now. So that's, that's one of the risks. The timetable can be a risk, especially if we want to accelerate it. Having a non-negotiable move in time is, is a risk. Because we can't just move in whenever we want. We, we need to do it on a date certain for, for kids and teachers. Risks are around teamwork and coordination issues. That's a big piece of a construction manager to, to help choreograph the, the hundreds of people and the dozens of contractors on the site. A risk is its proximity to the current building and being on a busy road, also proximate to the puberty school. A risk is it's next to town water. A risk is it's on a hill. A risk is the demo afterwards. We, we had two million dollars in contingency alone for the high school demolition and we used more than half of it. And we're lucky we had it. So we certainly encountered risks there. The fields aren't fully figured out yet. So that's an unknown, unknowns to me are risks. Sustainability, we are only doing part of our sustainability objectives there. We're, we're lucky to have the light plant coming in, but we've got to coordinate that. And I think a, a construction manager also deals with a lot of procurement issues, which could be problematic a few years from now. Where we're very fortunate is that we've got a fiscal condition on the part of the town that can sustain this if it chooses to. A big one where we lower our risk is we think we know the site. We don't think there's any surprises in the site. So that's, that's something that, that I think mitigates risk. But it is a serious question and I, I hear what you say, which is this town typically tries to mitigate its risk, especially if it's trying to protect people and protect quality. And there's a lot of quality to protect in this design, anybody who's looked at it knows that.
So just to, um, so, thank you, Court. I think it's, you know, here there's certainly risks that you're protecting from with C, CM at risk. Like you said, the architects had, had expressed an opinion at first that they didn't necessarily think that we needed to do that, but I know there's discussion coming, just to kind of keep us moving along. It, are we hearing, it sounds like we're hearing a consensus from the school committee that we should bring back to the building committee that at this point, school committee members would, would send a recommendation that CM at risk is, at risk is, again, preferred option. Again, it's the, we all know it's the decision of the building committee, but if we're there representing you, are you asking us to represent an opinion of preference for CM at risk?
I would not be opposed to that. I don't know about the others, but I personally.
Now that said, I think it's also to your point Cynthia, it's a big discussion at the building committee meeting. I, I know Court and I probably don't want to go in, you know, with our hands tied that we're supposed to vote for this no matter what because the school committee said it. So I think if it's fair, we could say, okay, we're hearing a, a probable preference from you all that you think you would lean towards CM at risk, but we obviously need to listen to the professionals in the discussion at the meeting and make our decision based on both of those factors together. Is that fair?
Right, and I want to personally to emphasize the concern about safety.
Absolutely.
Just one big ticket item I have. The community got to respond to both the gym and the auditorium because we have very specific numbers, size, seats, et cetera. I do not see that kind of specific number on our outdoor spaces. And the campus is not an infinite amount of space. So I would like to hear, are we replacing fields with the exact same size fields? Larger, smaller, different configuration? And then what are we planning for outdoor, other spaces outside of athletic fields?
So I'd say there's a, the outdoors is still more of a high level concept at this point because it's not as detailed like the space summary.
Thank you, it's so important that it not be high level because we're thinking about a bigger building, perhaps more parking, et cetera. So how does that, I think we, we need to have specifics about the fields and their configuration.
Yeah, oh, in terms of, yes, in terms of the space left, if the building gets bigger and everything, that's something we're actually supposed to hear more information from the designers on, at our next meeting. And, and jump in Laurie or Court, you might have more insight into this than I'm sharing. I was just kind of giving the.
The, the one other thing I, the, here is a known, a known is that the, the the glass or translucent bridge that connects the cafeteria admin wing with the classroom wing will be over a natural ravine. And it lends itself very nicely to an amphitheater kind of space. So that's one naturally that's in the topography, but beyond that, we don't know yet.
So that's what I'm saying, how can we have this situation without knowing heavily, I mean, talk about, you know, heavily used? Those fields are heavily used.
Oh, they are. Let me also add, in the, in the current sketch of a design concept, there are also fields sketched onto the site. So the, the fields would be in the current sketch, Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, or, or Court, correct me if I'm wrong, are equivalent to the fields that we have now.
But can somebody check that? I mean, just.
We can do that.
Yes, Laurie was just nodding. So that's, that's what they are now. And what we're waiting to hear more from the designers on when we come back is would that be affected by any increase in building size? And that's an important question. So, so you're right, this is critical to the discussion in terms of how much space is there for fields. I, when I was saying it's high level, I wasn't saying so high level that we don't know what's there. I only meant that, that what we know is the, the sizes of the fields and, and at a high level, what's included, a baseball, softball field and, you know, soccer fields, but it is equivalent to what we have now. And we need to look at if there are changes to the building, how that would be affected. So that's certainly in the discussion.
Because personally, I like the, the large field we have now, it's very flexible.
Yes.
To be chopped up in a zillion different ways. I liked the baseball, I think I saw a sketch where the, they flipped, you know, the baseball, the basically softball fields. You know, the home base is, you know, on this side of the field. I think it's so much better to have it the other way around. So I mean, I think it's just important, we're getting such minutia about the gym and the, the auditorium. And that's good, but I, I just think the outdoor spaces is something that is, is really important. And I think the community should have a pretty clear understanding about what's, how it's going to be replaced.
Yep, absolutely. Point taken and we'll make sure that we are clear in our communication about that also.
Sure, you, if we took a whole field at the high school offline during the construction, then people would want to know exactly what was coming back.
Yeah.
Heather, if I just gonna add, thank you for, for coming to us to take our feedback to the building committee.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah, so I, I, I do want to register my concern about the survey. You know, when I first heard about it, I, I just went back. I don't want it to, to, to take the place of a referendum because our referendum was town meeting. And I, I worry that the survey is trying to kind of unintentionally circumvent town meeting. And for the range, for the budget that town meeting approved was eighty to a hundred dollars. So to your point earlier, that's the range. So we could start at eighty and then look around and say, what else can we do? We have, you know, a window of twenty million. What can we add to this building rather than start at hundred and then add to that? I would like us to start, to, to, yes, to start from the lower end of that window and use the extra which town, town meeting voted for to hopefully have this building that's, that's wonderful while still staying within the budget that was approved at town meeting.
Yeah, I, I definitely hear you and that, that has been a, a concern all along, that, the, the balance and, and the the concern that we're starting too high, close to a hundred. And I think part of what that comes from is, is, is finally understanding what it will really cost to support the ed plan that we are committed to. And so to stay start at eighty, we could, we could present a building, building at eighty million, but it is not going to support the ed plan. It, it's just not even going to come close, to be honest. And so the eighty to a hundred was actually, it was this, that range itself, the, the eighty part of it at least, was established as a target by the building committee, when the building committee was first created. And we've come to realize that with our ed plan, eighty is not a possibility. With our ed plan, we're closer to a hundred. And that's just kind of the reality of where we are. And because we're, we're committed to that ed plan, we're not looking at, you know, how would we cut it to get it down to eighty? We're saying this is, this is our bottom line. And so then it, it, you know, it's a community question of what does the community want from there? I hear your concerns and so I, I appreciate you sharing them. I just wanted to give that context on the eighty and why we're not looking at an, an eighty million dollar option.
Also, didn't, the town meeting vote was to spend the one five on the feasibility study? It wasn't to approve a budget range for the building?
Right, correct. It was.
No one voted on this budget. No one voted on this budget.
Right, there was an expectation set.
All right. Sorry, Court?
The information presented, uh, was produced in a slide that said, the estimate, only an estimate, was 90 million plus, quote unquote.
Yeah, okay.
So that was the, that was, you can call it the understanding, you can call it the hope, you can call it the aspiration, or you can call it the guess, but that was, that was the number that people used when they voted the 1.5 to get started.
It's hard.
Right, right.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't think we can overstate the uncertainty of construction costs a mere two years from now and how they might, how, how things might get volatile. Hopefully not, you know, hopefully, uh, this isn't gonna, the, the, the economic tides aren't gonna turn for another few years, but we don't know that.
Just, just point of reference, the slides did indicate cost escalations and for the two years from town meeting, which is the spring of the building costing 95 to 105 million. So the data was there. I understand people grabbed the 90, but we tried to show, anyway, I don't need to get into the details, I just want to name that the 105 was actually out there. So.
Um, so are there other thoughts that you'd all like us to take back to the building committee?
Just that, I really would like to hear more about the outdoor spaces.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we'll begin by just verifying size for size, uh, known today and anticipated. Um, they've got a very capable guy named Mike Doan who's working on that.
Great. Yep.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on that, we're gonna move to our final item. And Lori, I believe it's you and Jared to bring back the capital plan. This is in accordance with the town manager and his side of the budget and how it interfaces with ours. And we have been over this, but neglected the vote. So we're coming back for a quick review and a vote tonight. Jared, are you on?
I am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep, that was a good summary.
Right, so we just need you to formally move and vote on the warrant to go forward. And I think you've got the language there.
All right, now, just for detail, this was $900,000. A, a good bit of it was the energy recovery unit, uh, at one of the buildings, another one to come in future years. We've got some life and safety, uh, money in reserve for middle school buildings in this capital plan. I believe we've got some floor replacements at an elementary and what's escaping me? Anything?
Did you mention the, the rooftop pods? Did you say?
I did not, thank you, good. I knew I forgot something. Okay, so we've been over this. I believe we were in accord with it. We can reopen it if we have to, but if not, uh, we will call up a, a motion here that Lori and her team have put together for us to the effect that, quote, "The Concord School Committee votes to approve the CPS capital plan as presented in the attached document." And that document was indeed in your packet. Also accompanying it is a motion for town meeting.
So moved.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And Cynthia, a second discussion, please. Those in favor, roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
That, aye.
Mr. Aye.
Brady, aye.
All right.
Great.
So with that, uh, once again, for the few people who stuck in with us, thank you so much. We hope to see you next week when we're going to host a community dialogue around our initiatives toward diversity, equity and inclusion leadership. And that'll be Tuesday night next week at 7:00 PM. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
And a second from Cynthia, thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
That, aye.
Mr. Aye.
Brady, aye.
Thank you all. Take good care, be safe.
You, good night.
Good night.